Call this Pawnee Business Council Special Meeting to order. It's 5:34 PM. At this time, I would like to ask Dr. Evans if he would give us the invocation. And to also remember the food, the food.
Thank you, President, for this. Noah, Noah Tiestewat, Lord, Heavenly Father, thank you for this day and all that you've given us and help us to open our eyes to the blessings that are around us and to appreciate the lives that we have. But with that, help us to always push to do the best that we can, to do better, to do better for our people. Bless these really good people, these smart people, and help us to make wise decisions and to do things that make the Pawnee Nation stronger, better. Forgive us when we fall short, help us do that little bit better each day. And help us to always remember those that are away, that are further, you know, are military or for whatever reason, those parts of our family, our people. And help them to feel their connection to us. And, Lord, please bless the food today for the nourishment of our bodies and those who prepared it. Jesus' name and amen.
Thank you, Councilman Evans. We'd like to welcome everybody that's in attendance today and to our guests. And just as Dr. Evans had noted, there is food back there. You're welcome to partake. We're going to go on with the meeting. Item number two, roll call, Declaration of Forum.
Ms. Nardle.
Here.
Jordan, canoe-ho.
I'm sorry, he's excused this evening.
George Gardapie here, Carol Chapman.
Here.
Cynthia Butler.
Here.
Donna Hare.
Detective.
Jean Evans.
Here.
Sammy Kimble.
Okay, item number three, we have approval of agenda. Are there any additions, deletions?
We do have some changes, President. At the top, we're going to change the original date from August 6th to August 8th. And then coming down to number eight, don't make me try to say that, program updates, we're going to take that one off.
Number eight.
Yeah, number eight.
Why are we taking that off, that program update?
She couldn't make it tonight, is what I was told. And it's also, she didn't submit a report. And then we are going to be, are we kicking those off as well, right? Are we adding those 10 through 14?
Are the reports in our packet as well? They were with the original quarterly reports, so I mean, they should have already been provided. And I'm not for sure why they weren't originally in on the agenda. Right.
Oh, okay.
But, do I have a question?
Yes.
So, all of these reports are in our packet, right? They were on Teams, right? Are we also having visitors tonight deliver those reports to us? And that's all?
Okay, so we'll take off 8, 10, 11. Oh, no, we'll keep housing. 13, I know, you're here, you're ready to give your report. And then, and Austin's here too, so we'll put that one, we'll keep that one. So we're just taking off the college?
And she was at the quarterly meeting?
Right.
And we, and she was told that she didn't need to report to this meeting. Her, their reports are in our packet, so if we have any update or any questions for the college, they can be forwarded, and we have a board member that's sitting here as well. Okay, Stacy is on. So, yeah, they should all just be ready to, ready to go.
Okay, so we'll keep that one there too. So we'll add that back on number 10, sorry. And then their old business, numbers, we're going to add number three, approval of 2024 Pawnee Nation Second Quarter Report Divisions. And then we will also be adding number four, approval of 2024 Pawnee Nation Second Quarter Report Financials. And those are all the changes.
And are the finances or the financial reports all current and complete?
Oh, sorry.
Okay.
I don't know if I said it.
CSG. Okay, yeah, it's on there, number 40. Okay. Any other updates or deletions?
So what are we deleting?
Number eight.
That's all?
Basically, I think that's all.
That's the only one we're deleting, and then we're adding the reports.
Okay.
I'll make a motion to approve the changes.
I'll second.
Got a motion on the floor by Councilwoman Butler, second by Secretary Gardapie. To approve the amended with changes, let's call for the vote.
George Gardapie, yes. Carol Chapman?
Yes.
Cynthia Butler?
Yes.
Donna Hare? Jean Evans?
Yes.
Sammy Kimble?
Yes.
Okay, at this time, we have item number four, Pawnee Business Council Travel Report and Travel Request. Do we have any, first, do we have any reports?
I do have a question.
Yes.
Sorry. Do we, do we as council members, when we do our travel reports, are those written reports that are submitted to be accompanied to our travel request and receipts?
They haven't been, but they should be. I know that there used to be a form, but that's not sent out anymore.
That needs to, that needs to happen.
Yes.
So if you guys are traveling, village reports.
Can we get that from Reenie or from procurement, who's over travel, to get that sent out? I do have a travel request, and it's for Sunday is the OIGA Board Meeting, and they'll, they're picking up the discussion again on sport betting. That's, they believe that's going to come into play with the new compacts, with the renewal of the gaming compacts that are coming out. That expire at the end of 2024. And then the Direct Service Tribes Advisory Committee Partnership Conference is next week from Monday through Thursday, and that's in Phoenix, Arizona. And then that's a trip that is invitational travel from IHS, so that will be reimbursed to the nation. And that's, that's the two that I have. Anyone else?
I'm not requesting council travel, but I will be on travel from work from Monday to Thursday, so I'll be out of pocket next week. Just letting you guys know.
So need a motion to approve travel.
I'll make a motion to approve travel.
Got a motion on the floor. Is there a second?
I second.
A second. And then let's call for the vote.
George Gardapie, yes. Carol Chapman?
Yes.
Cynthia Butler?
Yes.
Donna Hare?
I hope.
Jean Evans?
Yes.
Sammy Kimble?
Yes.
Okay, that takes us to item number five, Infrastructure Project Updates. Who will be presenting?
This is Chris, I'm online.
Hi, Chris. Floor is yours.
Thank you, Council. First up on your packets, we have the land use plan. We're still waiting to see if we're getting awarded for that to move forward through the ANA grant. Design build, so IHS Garage, we just poured the slab for that this week. So by Friday, I think, we'll start seeing some metal go up, some vertical construction. Courthouse renovations, so the enrollment office, we have sheet rock, tape and mud, and hopefully be painting next week. We have an estimate of September, mid to late September, for that to be totally complete and for Carrie and everybody else to start moving in for that. On the water sewer infrastructure, still haven't received any response back from IHS. We still have the EDA scope of work that we have, that we're looking at, kind of holding off just a little bit. There's not an end date for this. Kind of waiting to see if we have the ICVG grants. If that gets awarded, then we can de-scope a little bit. But a new grant came across my desk for the BI Climate Resilience Grant. So with this, we can look at planning for the water expansion also and for some implementation. They had some wildland options, so working with John to see if there's any additional items to be done for the fire departments. On transportation side things, you have resolution in there, talk about some bridges. I believe Alex is on here to talk about the energy side of things on the rep and reconnect items. Just want to make note that there has been no activity with canoe. I know council wants to know about that. There's a solar agrivotechs. So last time we talked, I kind of talked about solar agrivotechs, Pilot Project OU. Going to be working and seeing the land that's allocated for the college. No one really has that map, so we'll be going to properties, discussing that to see how this project can move forward. And then there's a waste transportation fuel grant project we're reviewing. Not sure if this really is going to meet the needs of Pawnee Nation at this time. And then there's some economic developments that Brian and I are working on that we'll be bringing to council real soon. Or proposal for something, it'll be an energy proposal, I guess, I won't label it as that. Hopefully you guys got to see the new aerial truck there. It's going to be a great resource for the nation and the surrounding communities. And then we're also, John's working on, still applying for the Emergency Medical Response Agency. And then we've completed the helipad, and we actually used it here a week or so ago, so. Other than that, if there's any questions from council.
Council, do we have any questions for Chris on the infrastructure?
Yes, I do. I don't see it in here, but I was reading the electronic documents, and I don't see it in here, but are you, Chris, are you getting ready to have a, did I see you were getting ready to have a retreat?
Yeah, we're going to work with, yeah, we're going to work with Amy on setting some dates to review the infrastructure plan to see what we have accomplished, where we need to try to do more, see if there's, the funding's still available in certain areas. But we have not set a date or anything with that quite yet.
Do you know where that will be?
No, and, you know, when it says retreat, I don't necessarily, you know, think that means off any certain place, or if we just need to mark off those days so we can just hammer those out.
Just like a two-day set aside.
A two-day set aside. I was just wondering, in reviewing the documents, I know a lot of that is projected, and you're just going to look into it, but it is still, if it does come to reality, it is many millions and millions of dollars. And I was going to request that the Pawnee Business Council members that would like to attend, attend this retreat. With the staff to prioritize, to look at what you are talking about, and especially for the treasurer to receive an invite, because if we're going to be spending that much money on infrastructure, I think it's only appropriate that the treasurer be included on the invite, so if we could please invite me for sure, and I would like to invite the members of the council to that retreat, because it's so important, and we do make the final decision. Yeah, we need to be on board.
Yeah, yeah, no, yeah, absolutely. I mean, this here is, you know, boots on the ground to see what, you know, if we're overdoing a capacity, where we're looking at, are we hitting those areas that we can do, you know, with the boots on the ground? And then, you know, and bring that information to council. So, you know, when it says a two-day, that's just throwing that out there, if that's what it is, but the thought was to get with the ones who are involved and everybody, to get everybody else's thoughts and everything, and then bring in council, hey, this is what we're seeing, this is what we were looking at. Let's have that bigger discussion with council moving forward, if we need to continue the same path, or if we need to move a different direction or whatever, but I want to gather, you know, the staff's ideas and thoughts, and then bring them with you guys and discuss those with you.
Well, we would like to also have some thoughts in that process.
Oh, absolutely.
No, I think we need a seat at that table with that two-day meeting. It'd be appreciated.
Okay.
Thank you.
Any other questions or comments? If not, well, thank you for, Chris, for your update, and we're moving to item number six, Energy Project Updates.
Yes, thank you.
Alex or who?
Good afternoon.
Who's, is that you, Alex?
Yes, that's me. Good afternoon, everyone. I wasn't sure if it was my turn or not, so I will give an update to the, to everyone on the projects that we have with the Pawnee Nation. I will start with the broadband. So Reconnect 3 has cleared all documents. We did hear from USDA today, they were asking for a copy of the DACA, which I did see Executive Director Jennifer send that over. Now they are asking for the bank incumbency certificate, so we'll be reaching out to Sovereign Bank to get a copy of that. We are just waiting for clearance from USDA. We've passed all the environmental curses for the project. When it comes to Reconnect 4, it looks like the environmental part is not cleared. According to USDA, there might be some tribal jurisdiction that corresponds to Osage, which we don't understand very well, because all the project is built on Pawnee Nation land. We will have a follow-up meeting with USDA next week between the Pawnee Nation and Triviquent to really understand where that project sits and what are the next steps. So Reconnect 3, we're good. Reconnect 4, we're waiting to hear more about USDA and the environmental that needs to be cleared. For the Rural Energy Pilot Project, we are meeting with Freedom, which is the oil and gas operator, which fulfills the geothermal part of the project. We'll be redlining, redlining the documents. It's called the IMBA. Next week, we'll be meeting in their offices, and I believe it's going to be in presence and remote, so we'll be have presence from Pawnee Nation, Triviquent, and Freedom Operating Energy. And this is to fulfill the part of the oil and gas hybrid lease, which we've been working with the BIA and BLM. Other updates I have is we've been working with the Pawnee Nation Housing Authority. We have ARDS that has been approved. We're going to do a zip code campaign within Pawnee County to just spread the word on the project and see if we can sign up more people to deploy the sensors in the houses which are part of the project. We're planning for September to have a workshop between OU and the Pawnee Nation College. This is going to be around energy, and this is going to be directed to students, and we're planning to include the high schools of Pawnee as well. Other conversations that are in the mix as well is the rep has a solar component, it's 150 kilowatts that was funded through the project. We're looking to see if we can incorporate that into the five megawatts that is part of the community power accelerator. I'll jump to the portable connectivity program, but that project is currently in full closure and is no longer going on. Last but not least is the community power accelerator. We are working, we've worked with Chris and through the Property Committee, DNRF, and we've got approved the MOU and the site land lease agreement, which we need to upload before the end of the month into the DOE portal that will allow us to advance the next stage. By having that MOU signed by the council and that site land lease agreement, that guarantees us that we can advance to the next stage, and that will allow us to go and get the funds for this solar project. When it comes to the agrivotechs, it's still to be discussed. I know that there's a group out of OU that is working on that as well. We are waiting to see if the government has funds or projects to kind of fulfill that part of the, of the project. One of them, the project is called Lasso. It has not published an FOA yet. We're yet to see where that stands. But I know that the Property Committee and the different partners at Pawnee Nation have manifested that they would like to include kind of a mixed site use for the solar, not only having solar panels, but having cattle or maybe agrivotechs to have a other source of income. Those are the updates I have, the different projects we have between the nation and Triviquent. I don't know if you have questions at the moment.
Council, do we have any questions regarding the energy project updates?
I kind of missed it on the discussion on the college, but I do have a question. Were we able to get around the OTO border dilemma that we had earlier this year on Reconnect 3?
Yes. I don't know if we've got over that dilemma, but it's no longer in our hands. We've crossed all the Ts on our, from our side, from Triviquent and Pawnee Nation.
Okay.
Now, we've sent out all the communications, and USDA has a copy of all of that. Now it's on their turf for next step.
Okay, so it's still pending then. Okay, thank you.
You're welcome.
And just to clarify, that, that area is still pending. It just depends on what USDA wants to do, because we were able to remove those homes from our plan, but it just depends on what the USDA is going to do with regards to the funding. But so far, we haven't heard that they were going to do anything, like take, take any time, any kind of funding back based off of a formula, formula method or something, but, yeah.
President?
Yes.
President, Nardle, just to clarify, so we, what we understand is that the 106 section, which is the environmental, which is the OTO aspect of the project, is cleared.
Yes.
So I believe USDA is moving, moving along.
All right, Alex, thank you for your report. Item number seven, Behavioral Health Facility Updates.
Hello, Council.
Good evening.
So just submitted my report, so I'll just kind of give a brief overview of it. So within the last quarter, there's been a lot of things moving along, so, you know, I've been able to see the, all the things going on on the construction side of it with the behavioral health. So a lot of bricks been being put up, siding's been put up, and a lot of interior stuff that's been going on is like the electrical plumbing, as well as the HVAC systems. So we were also able to bring in electrical from the telephone pole, or not telephone, but the electrical pole to the building, so we got electrical going on over there. It's not active or live wire right now, but once we get everything kind of moving along, we just tie into that. So everything regarding the construction, everything's on, on schedule, so that's good. Next, we're working on the FF and E, which is Furniture Fixtures and Equipment, so we're building that list out now, so that's going to be something that we'll have finalized within the next 30 days, and we'll start looking at getting ahead of schedule, getting some of that procured, which is kind of like the, the equipment for the facility, which would be your beds and all the furniture that goes along with that, so we're building that list up. Should have that done. The biggest thing that was kind of proactive was we continued to doing the outreach with the community. A lot of things that we've been doing behind the scenes is still continuing, assessing where we are, what's the community needs and everything going on there, so always engaging with our stakeholders and our partners, you know, looking at Grand Mental Health, Cree Oaks, and IHS as well. We've had several meetings with them and just seeing who is coming through their doors, who they're referring out, and kind of like being proactively what they see as we get closer to operational of like, what are the trends and the needs, so we can make sure when we get closer to that operational. It's that services that, you know, is the, is needed in our community, so we've been working along with that, but that's also valuable as we get closer, looking at the licenses, certification, accreditation that we are, will be filing with the State of Oklahoma, is making sure that that stuff's documented, and we're able to make sure that we get reimbursed for those services accordingly. So all that's just playing a valuable part to make sure, one, we're providing the best services that's definitely needed in our community, but proactively looking at what we could kind of forecast as we move along. So that's one of the things we all, all been doing. Next thing was, we had the Health Fair during 4th of July. That was a big turnout. We had a boost set up where we engaged with We had a booth set up where we engaged with tribal members and everybody throughout the community that went through our booth, gave them opportunity, empowering them to give them opportunity to name the facility. We had a couple suggestions as well as a blank slate where they can provide their name if they like. So out of that, we had about 94 votes that people were able to take the opportunity to vote and, and make their recommendations. So you see here kind of the names that were added to and which one was kind of the favorite among that. We are moving a little bit closer to the monument, getting the signage for the facility. So I know I've sent a couple of emails out to the council, but definitely want y'all's input on that. So we're looking at trying to have a decision on the name of the facility no later than September 16th, so we can get everything ordered and procured and making sure we meet that deadline. So if y'all have any questions in the meantime, feel free to let me know, but always looking for y'all's input because I think that's as valuable. And again, thanks to the council people that did come to the tour. You know, after the health fair, we invited the council to come, so I know not everybody was able to make it, and that's okay, but appreciate the ones that were. We got the opportunity to give them a chance to check out the site, walk it through, and, and that all went well. We also did a site visit at IHS and the Ponka inpatient facility that they have. Ascension was able to come down during this time and really engage with us and our leaders as well as the tribal members to continue that proactive engagement with the community and our, and our leaders to making sure that we provide the best services accordingly. Do want to note, August 23rd, Thompson Construction is hosting a owner and sub appreciation luncheon. It will probably run between 11:30, 12:00 to 2:00, but definitely want to invite leadership to come out for that luncheon, and the ones that might not have been able to make it for that walkthrough that we had previously, we definitely want to see if y'all interested in doing another walkthrough for the folks that would like to go again or wasn't able to make it there. Lastly, you know, we just continue, you know, I've got two more things. Lastly, on the community engagement, working with the president and the executive director, we're going to be hosting a town hall meeting, just again, being proactively engaging with the, the community. So we're looking around mid-September, haven't picked a date just yet, but that's just again to be engaging with the community folks and take opportunities to listen to their needs and things that they're experiencing, and it gives us the opportunity to kind of give them a project update and just really informally just engage with folks, listen to folks, and really just keeping that relationship strong. We're wanting to host an art competition, which we're working and partnering with the substance abuse program, so definitely anyone that wants to be a part of that contest, we're looking at art to display throughout the facility that just, you know, highlights those folks going through that transition, promotes prosperity and positivity, and just things that, you know, folks that would like to do that, give them an opportunity to have their artwork displayed. Lastly, you know, we always continue looking at funding and just kind of offset some of the stuff that we have. We were awarded two grants, one that plays along with the FFNE that I mentioned earlier for around a little over 157,000, and we able to get a generator grant that covered the cost of our generators for this facility, so that, those are two huge awards, partnering up with IHS to cover those. But again, I think that's kind of my report in a nutshell, but open to any questions y'all may have. Thank you.
All right, thank you for that, Brian, Counsel.
I have a question, Brian. Thank you for that. On your site visits to other treatment centers, are there any others that you have visited other than Ponka?
As of right now, that's the only one. We've, I've engaged with Kirk Shaw out of Osage. I know they just did a ribbon cutting with their facility, but open to still engage and check out any facility, hoping to do that one, but any other ones, we get an opportunity, we definitely will. We just, that's the only one that's been responsive on our side that's invited us out.
And if I could piggyback on that, in one of our, in one of our program planning, we were talking about doing a tour of all of the different facilities, as well as the private facilities, the ones that are, people don't really know about, so that we can start building those relationships and extending hands and, you know, meeting people and, yeah, learning our sister facilities.
Any other questions?
Actually, I do. So you went to the health fair and you were trying to do recruiting. How did that go?
Recruiting? We weren't really doing so much recruiting. We did have a job listing that we were projecting of some positions that will be open for employment. Not so much recruiting, but we did get a lot of folks taking those sheets to share with folks that might be interested in being employed at the facility. So it went well. We got a lot of folks engaged and knowing about the facility. There were some folks that, you know, work at IHS and other facilities that definitely interested in taking an opportunity for that. So it went well. There was a lot of engagement, and through that, that was good on our end. We weren't really recruiting, but just giving us the opportunity to proactively advertise some positions for folks that might be interested. It went.
Yeah, the last time that Ascension was on the phones and you were sitting in that seat, we, you were kind of talking about recruitment and such that you were going to try to, you know, at least get, get it out there, and it sounds like you did that.
Yes, ma'am.
Okay. And then when are we going to, and I'm going to start again, when are we going to start thinking about doing that, that talent search for that person that's going to be playing the, the key role for that behavioral health facility? When does that happen? I've been asked a couple times about that.
Yeah, and we talked about it in that meeting that we hosted with leadership when they were here in July. It was in that scheduling and that PowerPoint that we shared with y'all. I know we talked about it then. It was looking more on around the, I have to double check. I think the recruitment's a little bit fall this year, and then probably hiring folks are probably going to be spring of next year for sure.
So the recruitment will start in the fall, did you say?
Yes, on the advertisement. We believe that's going to take a little bit of time to get top-notch talent.
Yeah.
So it's important for us to, you know, have those positions advertised a little bit longer.
It's such a specific field, that's why I ask. Yeah, it's a specific field, and that's why I'm asking. There's a lot of interest in it, if you will, for that. Thank you. Okay, good. It looks great, by the way.
Thank you.
I would like to say I agree with Councilwoman Kimball because as we're going along, this facility is a, is listed as a psychiatric hospital, correct, Brian? Isn't, isn't it?
Right now, with the CON being this, this, what is it, this, this large, but it's, it's not technically anymore because now what we are is a, that's what we're reassessing now, because we will have psychiatric services being provided, but it's not technically labeled as a psychiatric hospital. If it is, and that's demand and need in our community, we definitely will get that accreditation through the Department of Health. Trends are looking at, right now, this is probably going to be a co-occurring SUD inpatient facility, which will be through the Oklahoma Department of Mental Health and Substance Abuse.
Okay. Okay. I, I'm just, I was just thinking about one of the meetings we were in with Ascension, and we were talking about the billing of Medicare and Medicaid, and that the comment was made that we can receive our billing as, listed as a psychiatric hospital, and that's why I asked that because we will be dealing with psychiatric patients, and again, the skillset of people in charge of this facility must have those credentials and be licensed in that area. It's just real crucial to the, to the success of the hospital because it's so important. And so I just hope that we get some really good applicants and reach far and wide for that, but I'll, I'll be in on the meeting with Chris this Thursday, so, I mean, next Thursday.
Yeah, and you're right, that's going to play a valuable role when we're looking at, you know, MD psychiatrists, any other licensed therapists and things like that. You have to have that on the reimbursement side. When we're looking at providing services, those things are what we're going to definitely be diving into because we want to make sure, you know, we have, you know, licensed psychiatrists, licensed medical doctors, especially folks that are going through the MAT program that's going to be looking at. You're going to have, you know, eyes that's going through those clients to making sure that they feel that. So yeah, you know, all that's going to be in place because it's going to necessarily be in place for our reimbursement. So yes, we'll be always looking. Anyone that wants to reach out or wants to know more information about it, you know, they can always reach me, and we can always set up a meeting with our team to, you know, dive a little bit deeper into it. But yeah, we're, we're excited, and we're going to be moving a little bit closer to that once we get idea of like all the services and things that we'll be providing.
And I think a lot more of that will come into play because we are, or they are beginning the program development calls. They've, they've had them a couple of different times, but I think once they get into that area, because right now it's still kind of broad as to what the information is that they're seeking out.
Right.
But once they do get into those areas, you know, we'll be able to report too on, you know, maybe potential barriers or obstacles, or if we're running into not being able to fill, you know, specific positions that are needed for, like Brian's saying, not only for treatment of care, but in all, for also to have someone on staff or be able to get credentialed for those reimbursements, so.
Yes.
That's very key. Any, any other questions, Counsel? Very none. Thank you, Brian, for your update. Oh, yes, Councilwoman here.
Okay, mine was more a comment, and, and you spoke about art contests with the new facility. The, the Ponni Health Center, which we built, which is 20 years old now, they just had their, our birthday. One of the components of that was an arts committee, and they had an artist from every tribe, and so all of the artwork that you will see, including the ribbon work on the floor, was all planned out, so it would be good to kind of follow that, that type of lead.
Yeah, we'll have a flyer that we'll post out, and again, this is just something that we were wanting to take advantage of. Working with substance abuse program, they get opportunity to provide those, you know, supplies to folks that, you know, may or may not afford it, but we want to make sure that's not, you know, a really a barrier on the mailman. But it gives us opportunity with our folks around here to really paint that picture through that transition, through that prosperity, looking forward. It's going to play a valuable role, so that was kind of one little niche that, you know, we heard about the IHS, and we wanted to kind of follow suit in that.
And I'm just going to piggyback off what Donna said. That was discussed on the call, Donna, and I did pay homage to your Aunt Marlene, writing in Mamiya, and I let them know, you know, that she was the lead for the Ponnis, and that's how, you know, a lot, a lot of that came about. So that was discussed too, you know, how they have the art, I mean, yeah, artwork and everything displayed at the front, but of course, it would have to be, you know, based off of the facility restrictions as well, you know, so we, we did pay homage to her. Thank you, Brian. Item number eight, we have tax updates. Ms. Mashankashay, the floor is yours. I don't know if you want, if you have any questions, we can get in touch with Mary.
I just have a real quick question. I've read, I've read through all of these reports and such, and I appreciate the work that Ms. Mashankashay is doing on our behalf. I just have one quick question, and what is the code committee? And that's going to be the first, the second sentence of her report. There have been several updates and ready to present it to the code committee.
Oh, I don't know if she's referencing the code committee or...
What's the code committee, though?
I hate to speak on her behalf, but that might just be the internal committee that is, is monitoring the contract because she's making recommendations for review and then going to present them. And then we did inform her of the process, and this, these codes are making the changes. We'll have to go through the governing docs and then also with the Attorney General.
Are you involved in that, Cynthia?
Not, not yet. It hasn't been presented to the governing documents committee yet. That was just informing her of the process. This was just the initial meeting where she had gone over the, the changes that she has initially recommended.
Mm-hmm.
So again, this is just precursor to before it, it's just the boots on the ground where before it comes to.
So the code committee's really a code. All right.
Yeah.
If I could, if I could jump in, yeah, I want to agree that...
Hold on just a second. And so that whole process where we were trying to, you know, let her know of the protocol, that was my question to, I had a question for governing docs, and then so now because we have, you know, this will be turned over to you for vetting or what, what, whatnot, how does that work with the Attorney General? Is that a simultaneous review or is that all-inclusive?
It can be. We, we usually invite the Attorney General to our meetings, so he'll be included.
Okay. Wait, I just needed to get that question clarified for her.
Yeah.
But yeah, if you have any questions on this report, we can get those to Mary as well, if you have any follow-up questions. Item number nine, Ponni Nation College report. Good evening, Stacy.
So I was unsure if you, are you my other business, Maria?
No.
So I was unsure if you already reviewed the, because I was in there Saturday for the meeting, so I didn't know if you guys have even reviewed the report or if I need to give...
No, it was recommended to move that to this, tonight's meeting.
All right, that's what I was unsure. So we have been working on getting a new partnership. Our partnership with NICC has ended, and so we have several tribal colleges that are meeting with us, so, that are interested. We have three right now that are waiting for approval from HLC before we can move forward. And then we have a meeting tomorrow with a new interested partner. We are also working on a, building our new website, so if you go to it and it's not there, it's because there was a contract previously with leadership, and when it ended, we had to enter a new one or they just took it down. So we did get one of our board members who could kind of put a message on there, but we had a meeting yesterday, so we're going to have a new website soon. Our Department of Justice grant will start in January, and there'll be 20 people that are going to be able to be in that, and we're going to open it up for enrollment in October, and it'll, it'll be pretty competitive, so we're excited about that. We have a lot of interested prospective students. We're still doing our medical certifications with Meridian, and we actually have been doing really well with that. We've had several medical coding students just here in the last week. We are going through our single audit. It's the uniform single audit. We've met the threshold of the 750, so we're right now going through 2022 audit, and then our 2023 year ended September 30th or July 31st, and so then we'll start our 2023 single audit in November. So we've been working with the auditor. It's going well. Let's try to think of anything else. We have several new sub-award grants with OU. Do you want to talk about them?
I can. We just, we have two contracts or subcontracts or collaborations with University of Oklahoma. of Oklahoma. One is regarding stormwater studies, a center of excellence from the EPA. We're, we're trying to evaluate potential storm damage that could happen when excessive rain occurs nowadays, but we're getting more and more rainfall events that can cause flooding. So, we're trying to investigate several communities, and we hope that Pawnee region is one of those that we, that we look into. And we'll have some seminars and workshops coming up starting next month, and hopefully, some of you can participate and get a better feel for what, what we're gonna do there. The other project is called an Agriball Take project, always with all this renewable energy that's going on. We're trying to make a demonstration site near the college where we have solar panels, but under the solar panels and around the solar panels have some kind of agriculture gardening events. So, in order to try to combine the two things, instead of, you know, most, most solar farms in the past have been just these huge dead zones, because they won't, they have, there's nothing there. They keep cutting the vegetation down, so we're trying to see if we can utilize it in a, in a slightly different way. The, the solar panels are actually harvest rain, in essence, if you will, so there's a way to utilize that surface for two things. One's create shade for some of the plants that are stressed out in our, in our area because of the heat, and the other one is to collect rain, that we can use some rain harvesting techniques to try to grow then. So, we're gonna try both natural prairie vegetation and just vegetables, for example, to see if, if that works.
We're also, we have the drops already all lined up with the NTI grant, so our fiber on the pathways of the, that were already there from the tribe, they are all set. So, we're working with telecom now to get our network set up. So, I've been today working on all the users and where they're gonna be. So, soon, we're gonna be on our own network, probably in the next month or so, and we'll be completely off the shared network that we share with the tribe currently. So, we're excited about that. And then, we'll get all, we'll have four new computer labs set up. We finished the student, or the faculty and staff handbook, and now, we're working on the college and student handbook with our accreditation consultant. I actually just renewed the contract today, and we started that. So, we, we have those handbooks, which are part of our accreditation criteria. So, we're excited about that. I was trying to think, oh, we do have, we did also get legal, we, we have a law firm that is taking on our case with NICC for the termination of the MOU, you know, without following the steps that were in the, in the MOU. And we have contacted HLC, did a formal complaint, that they have replied, that they are in the process. They said that they did find that NICC did not meet accreditation criteria. And so, they're going to be, it's gonna be on the HLC website, what, what they do. They're giving them so many days to reply, and then, we'll see. They may get put on probation over that. And we have also, our law firm contacted the BIE to let them know the way they use the BIE funding that they received from our 102 students. So, so we have that going on, and we also have court this month, at the end of the month, with Baycon College again. We met in May. They have a new president, and the judge gave them a couple of months to catch up on where we are with that. And he advised that we have a meeting, and so, I tried to set one in, in May. We haven't heard from them. From what I understand, it's going up for auction, so we're hoping that we'll get the funds they owe us in August, you know, or we'll get that, we have a judgment on the default. So, if they sell, then we'll get the funds that they owe us. So, we're hoping that we'll get both of those. And we have a, our actually annual board retreat on the September 21st and 22nd. It's gonna be in Tulsa. And I think that's it. I think that's about it on our updates.
Council have any update, or any questions? Yes, Councilwoman Kimball.
Hi, Stacy.
Hi.
So, the report that you sent over with your financial reporting.
Yep.
I can't read it on the PDF, nor on the print. Would you mind re-sending that to us when you have a moment, please?
Yes.
It's pixelated.
I'm sorry. Yeah, you can't read it. And that would be very helpful. And then, you noted that enrollment for spring of 2024 was 102 students. How, how badly, or not how badly, but were you impacted with this reneg of this NICC deal that they had? Did we lose students to that?
I mean, all of our students are just waiting for us to secure partnerships, like, but we are also advising them to not get off their education track.
Yeah.
It did, it did impact us. I think
I figured.
That they, we will get most of them back, but there's several that we're gonna graduate in fall. I mean, almost half, yeah. So, we're, we're trying to help them get to where they need to for now.
Yeah.
Because, you know, right now, we do have several very, very good possible partnerships, but it does take time. It is a process. We don't wanna rush it and get into a situation like
I understand.
we have been in before. So, we're trying to help them, you know, like, for instance, my daughter was one of the students, and she's going to OSU, and we can't get them to send a transcript at all for our students. So,
Terrible.
Like, today at OSU, they, they, there's no response. So, a lot of our students are having that same issue. So, we're, we're trying, so that's another thing that I will continue to update our, our lawyers and HLC on that part too. Because if HLC doesn't, they didn't, it's against policy, if they don't do what they're supposed to, then Department of Ed will get involved, because HLC, they have oversight over HLC.
Right.
So, so, yeah, a lot of, and the way they ended the partnership, most of our students don't want to go there, and, and I don't really want them to, but I don't want them to not finish or get off track. We're hoping maybe, possibly, if, if we can secure one of these partnerships, that we could start, like, the second midterm of fall, which would be October. And so, we already have all of our students that would, that what they would need for the fall, like, the most important, that we're gonna graduate. So, we're, we're really trying. We have three that really are very, very interested, and two of them are waiting on HLC approval. One of them has two partnerships like this right now, so they know what they're doing, and it's a tribal college. The other one, it just is getting approval, because they, they had a governance report. They didn't meet on the last HLC visit. They found out, like, the day after we met, which is gonna be a really great partnership. And then, the other one, they really wanna do this too, and they're very capable, but the president is resigning. So, we met, and we had a really great meeting. They wanna do it, but she's like, I'm gonna meet with my team now and see if they're okay taking this on, because I'm leaving. It's kind of like, I think, gonna be like her legacy that she leaves, if possible. And then, we have a big meeting tomorrow. So, there's a lot of good things going. It's just, it takes time, and it's a process.
Yeah.
So, we're just trying to tell our students, like...
To hang in there, huh?
Yeah, hang in there, and however we can help you, so you don't get off track. So, we don't, we don't want them to just not go to school and wait.
Right.
You know, so.
Thank you very much. Yeah, if you could send over that financial reporting, that'd be great.
Yeah, Cordelia actually would, wanted to do the report, and she does the report, but I have that information, so I can just send it over.
Thank you very much. That's all I had. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilwoman Kimball. Anyone else?
Yes, thank you, Stacy, for the report. I just had a question, just kind of follow up on what Councilwoman Kimball, your report says that prior to the ending of the relationship, you had 102 students. How many students do you have now after the, ending the relationship with them?
Well, we don't have any, because we don't have any partners, so we, we can't enroll. We have, like, our certification, but as far as our associate degrees, we don't have anything, because we're not accredited. So, it would be, if we offered courses, they, they wouldn't matter. So, that's why we, we have them all. They're like, they're still our students, but they're, but right now, we don't, we, we're not able to offer them anything.
They're not enrolled.
That's why it was such a really...
So, you really have 102 students, but they're just not enrolled? Is that it?
They're not enrolled, and we're, yeah, and there was 11, there was 11 that graduated.
Okay.
So, I've had a few, Marcie told me yesterday, a couple of them didn't finish.
I just had one more question. Can you tell me how many are Pawnee? How many of those students are Pawnees?
I have, I have that data. I just couldn't tell you right now, but, yeah, I can tell you...
It'd just be interesting to me.
I could look it up while we're still here and tell you.
On Saturday, when very few people were here, but we passed down a packet that we called the accreditation packet.
It's that one.
And that has all the profile of the students.
It does, and their tribe and everything, and their degree they were in.
It's all in there. I don't know if you were here Saturday or not, but...
No.
Is that it right there?
You can get to it.
Is that the one?
This, oh, is this thing?
Does it say accreditation packet?
At the end, you see the profile.
It just says partnership.
I think that's the packet, though.
Oh, well, then, it's in here?
Yeah, toward the end. For the, for the, for the student, for the, for the degrees are male, female.
Tribe?
Yes.
I was trying to see if I have it right here.
Cordelia presented on Saturday.
Oh, okay, well, yeah, I was, I, I do not see it in here. Here's two pages, but that it's not.
No, it's like...
It doesn't mention the tribes.
She passed it out at the meeting. It wasn't part of the report.
Yeah.
Yeah, because it's like 15 pages. It's the last page. Yeah, it's, she passed it out at the meeting Saturday. But, I can send it to the, the council.
Do you think it's maybe, is it 50%?
It's a, it's the high, we have the highest number of Pawnee tribal members. It's more than 50%.
Okay.
I just don't wanna tell you wrong, but there's quite a few.
Okay.
Yes.
We can get that to you.
Yeah, okay, thank you.
If she doesn't find it in that, that one, because, yeah, that's, she handed out the packet.
I can wait on it.
Okay.
No problem.
Any other questions for Stacy? I have a couple of questions. You had noted in your report that you have the staff handbook and faculty and staff handbook. Do you have, does the college have fiscal policies in place?
Yes, so, that's the other thing. We do have a remote CFO now.
Okay.
And she, that's the first thing that she implemented, was fiscal policies and procedures, and, you know, forms along with it. And that's one of the things that has helped us so much through this audit we're going through, that she's, she's input several internal controls. It's not always easy for everyone to understand, that it's just, it's what we have, what we have to do. And so, she's putting best practices, she's set bare, like, it's a, like, a whole big change as far as the internal controls that are set, and it's really, really been good for the college, and it's been great for the audit. So, to show that where, where our CFO has put all these things in place, and there's, you know, a procedure, and a policy, and a form, and there's, nobody is doing things that they shouldn't or have access. So, it's been difficult, but it's been really good for us.
Okay. And I'm, I'm sorry that you had to hear the, I mean, I'm sorry that you have to go through the audit, but that just tells, I mean, you know, that just tells that you're growing because you met the threshold, so.
Right, yeah, yeah. And we, there wasn't an audit since 2018, so...
Yeah, good job in getting, securing that funding. And the last one is about the, what about HR? Who does your hiring? Or who's your, who's your contact for HR questions?
We don't have, like, an HR, because we don't have funding for it, but we do have an organizational chart, and that's one of the things that we set up right when I came in, and then, he as Chief Academic Officer, and then, with our accreditation consultant and the CFO. So, we have created direct supervisors, and who is over them, and then, who would be, so, like, for Philippa, he, he does all the hiring for the instructors. He's also over quite a few of the employees. And then, after that, it comes to me. The CFO is over accounts payable, and I'm direct, I have Jasmine, she's the executive assistant. She's directly under me. Everyone else is directly under him. And so, we have a process of, and through things, organizational chart.
Okay.
But, we don't have funding for an HR yet.
Okay, can we get his contact information to Jen?
Hmm?
Thank you.
I was wondering too, could we get a copy of your bylaws, your articles and bylaws?
Yeah.
Okay, thank you.
Like, the board's articles?
The college, yeah.
So, yeah, the board has bylaws and articles of incorporation, and then, the college has the policies and procedures and the handbooks.
The bylaws, yes, from the board.
Okay. Yes.
Hearing no further questions, well, thank you for your report, Stacy.
You're welcome.
We'll move on to item number 10, Pawnee Nation Housing Authority Report.
I'll be doing the housing report during the second quarter. We had six full-time employees and two contract employees. We did have two new tenants in Littleson addition, which is Eagle Chief Drive, and we didn't have any placements for non-Nahasda homes. We did lose two of our elders tenants, and in the report, I had that we had one, but we did lose two of them, and they will be missed. We just wanted to mention them in our report, because they were longtime tenants of the Housing Authority, and they had passed away. And, you know, these people, we get to know because we spend so much time with them when they come to pay their rent and they have issues. So, we did wanna mention them in our report, so you do see that. A report on the HAF program, which is the Homeowners' Assistance Program, it has been closed. This was assistance funding that came down from the US Treasury to help homeowners. We were able to do mortgage payments, utility payments. We paid on property taxes, homeowners' insurance payments, and we did some home repairs, such as HVACs, floors, walls, plumbing, and other things. We had 102 applicants for this program, and we were able to assist 83 who were eligible for services. We continue with the rep program. I, I think we forgot to put this in there, but our rep, Energy Coordinator, left at the end of the second quarter to go and do his internship down in Texas. I forget which city, San Antonio. And he comes back at the end of this month or next month, and then, he'll be continuing on. So, during the quarter, we worked on, continuing, continued to work on community engagement, which was phase two of the project or the grant. We attended the Pawnee Chamber of Commerce Roundtable, and then, there was a cookout that was done for the tenants to get them to sign up for the sensors, that sensor deployment that we're doing. There, he's continuing, when he gets back, he'll continue to work on the solar certification and the electric batteries, the EV chargers, and then, they will be working on phase three, which will be the installation of the sensors. And I think that's gonna be happening pretty soon. It's gonna be happening with, hopefully, within the next month. We're gonna start with five residential and five commercial, so we'll be doing that within, probably, the next month. The next thing is the Board of Commissioners. So, in the report, I put in here a little bit about what they did in their quarter, or in their meetings. They met on April 10th. They heard presentations from Brian Kirk on the Tribal Home Rebate Program, and then, a housing collaboration that he brought forward. They asked him some questions, and they wanted to get some additional information, which I think he brought forward in the next, in the next quarter. They also did a letter of support for the Solv-It Prize Grant, and they got updates from the community meeting that they had on in March. On May 14th, they had met, and they met with Amy Wilson on services for planning and development on the 14 acres that was purchased, which were, secured some of that funding through the next year's IHP. And Mr. Kirk came back on that meeting as well and talked more about the Tribal Housing Rebate Program. The board continued, also continued to talk about the 2025 Indian Housing Plan, and they talked about the new objectives and goals for the upcoming funding year. And then, they also talked about property purchase, down payment assistance, and termination of a building lease. And they're June, they met on June 11th for another meeting, and they finalized their plans for the 2025 Indian Housing Plan. The plan was actually given an extension for that month, which was July 18th. So, they discussed that. They discussed some more about the Down Payment Assistance Program, and it closed for the fiscal year. So, that, that program for 2020, fiscal year 2024, which ends this September, is closed as of now. We had $10,000 in that program, and we assisted a Pawnee tribal member who qualified for, as a first-time home buyer, for $10,000. And so, we were able to do that for them. Let's see. They also discussed updates and revisions to the lease agreements for our tenants, and the board approved property purchase in Pawnee, and that, and that will be paid for out of non-Nahasda funds. I don't have an update on which property. I think I missed that meeting, so I apologize for not having that information, but we'll get that put in here, probably whenever we start on the closing part of that. Next is our quarterly goals. So, we have the rehabilitation project, continue to do that. Maintenance continues to cover the lawn maintenance. Down payment assistance, as I said, is closed. During the quarter, we had one applicant that was approved and two applicants that were denied. And the only reason why they were denied is probably because they didn't have all their information in, and they were in processing, and the one applicant had turned all their stuff in and went through the process. Youth activities during the quarter, there were three gift cards that were given to families. We had four checks that were done for the cheer, cheerleaders, for their fees to join cheerleading for the quarter. And then we had one donation, and there was a donation to the princess dance. They donated bananas for the dance. College housing assistance, there was one applicant, and they were approved for housing for their, funding for their rent. Emergency assistance, this is assistance with utility and rent. We also do, we also assist with homelessness at times, and we had two applicants, and they were approved for utilities and rent. Our financials are attached. If you have any questions on those, it does show where some of our programs or what we've spent so far. During the third quarter is where we will, it'll show more information because it'll be the closeout of our, our fiscal year. So you'll, you'll get a lot more numbers and what we've spent with those programs in the next quarter, so if you have any questions.
Yes, Councilwoman Kimball.
I always have a question. What's this tribal housing rebate program, Brian, that you're presenting? What's that all about? In case somebody asks.
The rebate program, so that was, that's kind of like piggybacks off the rep grant. Well, we were looking at some funding opportunity that could kind of help folks look at rebates that could help update some of these homes through like weatherizations, buying energy-efficient equipment. That could be HVACs, energy savings, stoves, washing machines, whatever it may be. Part of this program is, allows folks that invest in some of that stuff, can get a rebate for those services, so, or not services, but also some of the costs, so they're not out of pocket one hundred percent. So we thought this was a great program that kind of piggybacks off some of that rep, because once we start putting the sensors in, a lot of these homeowners will know, like, hey, you're utilizing or energy usage is high because you have outdated HVAC system, you have very thin windows, whatever it may be. We're able to track that down, so that rebate will help offset some of that cost if we go down that program.
Let me jump in here to clarify.
Thank you.
This isn't a program that we have. This is just a funding opportunity that, a funding opportunity that he met with Housing on to see if they wanted to develop a proposal for that program.
Thank you.
And then if we did receive that program, then the rebates would come forward.
It seems like you just, yeah, it seems like a lot of hands in the pot. I'm like, what's going on? The people probably want to know if there's something that they can be getting, right? Thank you.
Any other questions for, on the housing report? If not, we will move to item number eleven, Pawnee Nation Tribal Development Report. Mr. Waller, the floor is yours.
Thank you. Can everyone hear me okay?
Yes.
Okay. I'm Robert Waller, CEO of the Pawnee Tribal Development Corp. The report was submitted. I think everyone has the financials. I'll give you a, just a quick overview of some of the highlights. The gaming revenue was up by six percent. Retail revenue was down slightly, but our overall operating expenses were also down by about five percent, which all of that resulted in increases in EBITDA and net income for the quarter. All three casinos were up in revenue, with the Trading Post being the largest and an eighty percent increase over the quarter of last year. The debt covenants for the quarter, we're doing extremely well on our debt covenants. We're above all of the minimums and below the maximums. I think the debt service minimum is one point five. We're at almost three point four. Same with fixed charge. The minimum is one point one five, and we're at three point four. The leverage ratio, I think the maximum is three and a quarter, and we're at point nine, so doing really well on those. It's, it's kind of fun to do these meetings for me, just because I, I don't really look at quarterly information that much. I'm more of a month and a year to date for this year compared to last year. But so, so in looking at that as well, on a year-to-date basis in 2024 through June, EBITDA has been up by about forty-six percent, and our hold percentage is, is doing really well, and it's up about ten percent on our hold, so that's, that's always good to see. Some of the things that we're tossing around, thinking about, working on, thinking about a, a facelift for the Trading Post, adding some more games, and actually adding some new games. One of the things that we're trying to do is look at some new vendors, so we can have some, some game variety for our customers. Right now, we just, we have two. GCG actually reps a lot of different brands, but there's seven or eight that they don't, so we're going to try to bring some of those in. We're, we're looking at the feasibility of a bingo hall. It's, it's, it's coming back pretty big around us in other states. So I'm, I'm, I'm looking into that, looking into possibly doing an office building that's a little closer to Stonewolf. So our directors are, are actually in the hunt of things. We actually hired a new events and social coordinator, social media coordinator, I'm sorry. We had a, a car show a couple of weeks ago, earlier, I think, last weekend. We had a movie night. The, the car show, I think we had fifty-four or fifty-five entrances, and it drew a pretty nice crowd, which for our first event, I thought it was great. The movie night, I think they said there were twenty-two or twenty-five people there, so that was good. We, we actually had a meeting this afternoon, and we're going to have a big tailgate party outside the casino for the OSU-Kansas State game, and OSU's going to be there, Anheuser-Busch is going to be there. Lots of different events and things going on at, at that function. They're planning a big, real fancy dinner night that will, at the end of dinner, we'll have a magician that will entertain them for forty-five minutes or so. We had the, we had the beach bash last year for the, just the Pawnee community, and we had it out at the Bath House. This year, we're going to try to have it out at Stonewolf Casino and include some other communities as well. And there'll be a lot, a lot of events there as well. I think we're going to end that with a movie night on that, that same day. So that should be fun. So they're working really hard, coming up with some great ideas. I think some of the other things they're thinking about are comedian, do some, some bands instead of solo acts. There's maybe a line dancing night and a line and pallet. So, so they, they've got a lot of ideas going, and we will probably run out of time before, you know, winter hits, but we, we should be able to start next year early in the spring and, and have a lot of events for people to do. We're going to try to build a stage out on the twenty acres, not anything massive, just something kind of right up by the casino that we can do some outdoor events with. Also working on some rebranding ideas, and if we can take advantage of the Stonewolf name and logo a little more. We've also been looking at an LED sign. We've been looking at this for quite a while. I think we're about ready to pull the trigger on the side of Stonewolf, right there beside the restaurant, just something that we can advertise promotions and specials and things going on. That, that should be a, a nice addition. I had some bad news today. We thought we were going to get our declination letter on our new loan this week, and then we could get it all closed next week, but apparently the general counsel person that it was assigned to won't have it finished this week, and they're going to be out of town next week. So that could be another week or two before we get that finalized, but hopefully she'll jump right back on it when she gets back into town. It's already gone through the, the first two phases, and it's just, it's on its final phase. They said it was going to take, we had a conference call with them, and they said it was going to take four to six weeks, and they've had it for eight weeks so far, so hopefully they'll, they'll push it out pretty quick when she gets back. We've got a new cash management software and, and revenue audit software that we're installing, should be finished sometime next month. That'll be a great, great little savings of time for us, because what it does is it, it evaluates both systems and shows you where, where things aren't equal. So that, that should save our revenue audit a lot of time and help our Cajun Vault employees and kind of streamline their process. We've also sat down with both of our, our vendors, VGT and GCG, and we're, we're working through a process to raise our hold percentage at all three of the casinos. And it's, it's done just slowly over time, so probably this time next year, we'll be complete with that. We just do it a little bit each month, but it's, it's, it's already increased quite a bit from where we were last year. We're, we're, we tried to get out, we, we have, we're in a contract with Ditrionics, which is our kiosk machines, and we tried to get out of it. We're in it through March of next year, but we were unsuccessful. But we're going to replace those, and at OIGA, we're going to talk to everyone, set them all side by side, see which one's the best deal for us, and come March of next year, we'll have, we'll have new kiosks or ATRs in all the casinos. They're also working on bringing the accounting back in-house. We're, we're making great progress there as well. We should probably have it all back in-house at the end of September. We're going to keep several things with Finley and Cook that are more compliance-related, because I want to keep that relationship alive. Just, they're a wealth of information if, if we need, ever need anything. It's, it's nice to be able to call them and ask a question or get their take on something. So those are, like I said, some of the things that we're working on or tossing around ideas about. Are there, are there any questions?
Thank you for your report, Mr. Waller. Counsel, if you have any questions for Mr. Waller.
Just a comment.
Yes, Councilwoman Kimball.
Mr. Waller, also, just to let the nation people know here that are local, that our own Gilbert Beard will be performing tomorrow night from eight to nine.
Yes.
So if you get a chance, get out and see him. I appreciate you bringing in live entertainment like that. He is, he's very talented. I wanted to give him some props. Thank you.
Yeah, I think, I think everybody that they brought out has been, has, has been a ray of sunshine.
Yes, Councilwoman here.
Yes, thank you for your report. I do have a question about the percentage of enrolled Pawnees and other tribes, and it's, has gotten a lot lower than what it was. Are there any efforts, any plans in place to try to recruit more of our Pawnee people for those positions?
Yeah, we, we actually, we've had pins made, and we, we have flyers that, you know, I have eight pins in my car, and every time I talk to a Pawnee tribal member, and, you know, I, I hand pins out, we try to give, you know, all Pawnee Nation members an interview of, of, you know, whoever applies for whatever position. So, yeah, we're, we're, we're trying hard. It's, the, kind of the problem we have a lot of the times is we're, we're in a very small community, and it's, we, we have a high turnover rate, which, you know, I, the last casino I was at was much higher, but, you know, if, if you have a rate of sixty to seventy percent, usually when someone quits or, or, you know, they're terminated, it, they, they can't really reapply for a year. So, you know, we, we exhaust a lot of the, the local community, and then, you know, they, they filter back in, though. So a lot of times, you know, they, they might think the grass is greener somewhere else, and they go to work, and then they realize that, we've had a lot of people that have done that, and then they actually come back after a year.
It's interesting, Mr. Waller, this is Sammy Kimball again. It's interesting that we, we tend to have a, a large amount of unemployed, if you will, that are applying here at the nation and applying at TDC, and often they're not. Sometimes they're unqualified for the positions that they're seeking here or vice versa. And it might be a great idea, and I'm just speaking out loud, to, you know, have, have both HR departments kind of collaborate between those that, that need skills. You know, we, we have WIA workers, well, they're not called WIA workers here. What are they called? WEX workers, WEX workers. We have people that are applying for taro positions that really might find a niche there, you know, within the gaming area. So it, it certainly wouldn't hurt to open that scope up and, and try to, try to work together, you know.
Absolutely. I think that's a great idea. And actually, if, if someone applies for one position and they're maybe not qualified for it, we, we, we try to push them to other positions within the company. I, I was actually at Sonic, I don't know, a month ago, and I gave out one of my pins to a young man that's a tribal member, and now he works for us. So it, it, it really works well, and, and that, that's a great idea. I, I'll actually have our HR department get in touch with, with the tribal HR.
Right, and then another thing also that we all should be considerate of is transportation. So I don't know if, if, you know, if you have set schedules, say, from eight to five or one to nine or whatever that is to, you know, just to provide transportation from town out, out south to the Wolf. Maybe that's an also a consideration that can be made, but we can all sit here and, you know, try to brainstorm it. But I think the collaboration is a great start, and I appreciate your time tonight. I'm really happy about the numbers. I'm really, really smiling at the Post with their seventy-nine percent gaming revenue. You know, I think those, opening up those hours has really played a lot. I think you can attest that a lot of our older community here in town really don't like to go out south, and maybe there, again, they don't have transportation to do that. So it sure is, it sure is a great opportunity. Thank you.
Well, and I, I, I really think when, when we, when we give it the facelift and bring in some more games, some new games, and we're going to big standard hours, we're going to go from five days a week to seven days a week, and probably stay open, you know, right now, we're at ten o'clock, maybe stay open until midnight. I think it'll go up another seventy-nine percent.
There you go. Thank you.
Yep.
Any other comments? Hearing that, Mr. Waller, we thank you for your time tonight and for your report.
Thank you.
That takes us to item number twelve, Pawnee Nation Executive Report.
Okay, good evening, Counsel. And, yeah, I wanted to say, I wanted to compliment Robert because he's been so great about collaborating with the nation. To your point, Councilwoman Kimball, that was a good suggestion. We've actually been talking about HR's, or HR's collaborating as well as our communications department. departments. So that's, that's the thought because we need to be working together to, to do more.
And, and, and to add on to that, um, there's a, there's a Pawnee City Facebook page and people are always asking, you know, who's hiring, who's hiring? And a lot of times people jump in and they say, you know, check out the Nation, check out TDC. But it's important, um, you know, for us to make sure that, that, uh, both of our entities are, are, you know, out there for people that, so maybe they'll cross that green bridge and come apply.
Yes, that's good. Okay. Um, as I was saying in my first quarter, 2024 is really devoted to day-to-day operations and, um, really digging in and getting, um, procedures together and making sure that we are getting our internal operations set as well as our outreach. So, um, for our operations, our planning and tribal development director, we hired that recently and that was Mr. Chris McCray. This past quarter, we hired our Division of Tribal Operations Director, which was our Lasharo Pat Leading Fox. We also worked with HR and our HR committee and with council in getting People of Perspective Human Resources Firm on that's helping us, um, go through and audit our HR office and then going on next steps. So our next steps then is working with the HR committee and bringing those recommendations so that we can share that with the council. Um, we also have our updates with Ms. Mary Mashankashay with the tax consultant, updating our tax code and seeing what other great things that we can be doing. Our IT and property, uh, we installed a new generator for the Nation, which was fantastic because usually at Wednesday at clockwork at 10:00 AM, everything would shut down. And we don't have that anymore. It's fantastic. And so, uh, the employees, we all had a private, quiet little celebration of that. Emergency management is working on a comprehensive emergency management plan and creating an inventory of resources to share with other tribal nations' emergency management. The team is also drafting emergency management deployment plans for emergency services and financial assistance to be presented and approved by the council. This plan will partner with and collaborate with FEMA, the Red Cross, the Oklahoma Air Tribal Emergency Management Coalition, the Oklahoma Management Coalition, Pawnee Nation Social Services and Pawnee Nation Housing. Also working with the Attorney General on working on some of the, as well as Head Chief Lasharo and Kerry Peters, the Director of Enrollment, and John James, our Emergency Management Manager. On making sure that we have codes for emergency times, whenever we need to get, um, information from enrollment on addresses of how to help people in need. And, uh, so we are, the AG is helping me draft some policies as well as draft a code that we can bring to governing docs and then bring to, um, the council on that so that we can start putting that into our enrollment code and then as well as into our emergency management code. Taro offices have been relocated to Building 64 and if there's anybody that needs, uh, to get information from them, Gabe Clark is your person that you can get ahold of. The Pawnee Nation Professional Development 12-month curriculum for manager and directors. We worked with the college on doing that, so Stacy and you guys, thank you so much for all of that. That's been a two-year program, so we're thrilled about it. That's gonna begin on September 17th with two tracks. The third Tuesday of each month will be the Tribal Leader Professional Development Certification. That's designed for directors. And the third Wednesday of each month will be the Tribal Management Associate Program is designed for managers, supervisors and staff identified as future leaders in management. And our classes are already full. And I'm not sure Stacy, if you've got the numbers, but, um, they have to sign up with HR and we've had a lot of excitement with staff about that, so I'm really excited about it. The managers, we have a waiting list now for the next class, so I'm excited about that. Infrastructure Task Force, the task force is planning a two-day retreat, I think we talked about that, um, to review completed items, items in the process and areas we need to pivot. This planning is underway, um, as far as planning the dates out. Once the retreat is finalized, then we will present it to the council. And this is an operational retreat and so our plan is to see, hey, are we working with the right, um, grants, um, the grant management? Are, are we working on the right areas that we need to work on? You know, there's a upcoming presidential election, US, and so we need to make sure that, how are we pivoting our funding to prepare for that? That's, I think that any government should be doing that. So that's what we're gonna be doing for Infrastructure Task Force and so we will send invites to the council on that. We posted our vacancies, we still have this available and we are looking for top talent. Finance Division Director, Communications Manager, a Field Investigator, IHS Housekeeping. And then also for our tribal court positions, um, if anybody's interested in being a public defender for the Nation, um, a chief judge or prosecutor, they would reach out to the executive office, that'd be myself or Jamie, and we could help you with that for our courts. We have updates on intergovernmental affairs, on the lawsuits, um, our safety lawsuit. I'm sure that, Madam President, if you'd like to go over that, you can go over that. And, um, all of that information is in here. For people who are hearing this, um, on, online, what this is, is the previous, uh, administration and Trump's administration, their EPA Director had decided to do a quick midnight rider, if you will, and decided to, um, do a, um, a new, a new plan for EPA for government, I mean, for Oklahoma. Whenever the McGirt decision happened, uh, Governor Stitt went to President Trump and asked if, if it was okay for tribes to go to the state and get all EPA funding and, um, any kind of approvals done to the state. And, um, that was, that was approved. So luckily at the time, we had President Echahock, who, you know, does environmental law, he did a lawsuit against that. And then we opened it up as a class action suit, invited other tribes to join us and they did. And so, um, we had talked with the EPA about this, saying that, hey, this is something you can't do, it's illegal. Whenever Madam President came on board, she wrote a letter to EPA requesting for a meeting to talk about this. The, the letter was very powerful, they immediately wrote back and said, okay, we will talk about this. And so what happened from that is then, uh, the AP, the EPA lawyer said, okay, so we are a new administration, we are new people and we don't agree with what happened before. We, we, we'd like to apologize and open up some conversations through, um, tribal consultation. And so Madam President said, that's, that's great, that's what we need to do, as well as, um, the other tribes that are on the lawsuit. However, there are other tribes in Oklahoma that need to have the same ability. So Madam President had a, a call with EPA and all the other tribes, as well as our lawyers, and explained to the other tribes what the issues were. And, um, and the EPA explained to them in detail what happened, apologized and has asked them for tribal consultation as well. So, um, and right now, that's where we are, we're just working with EPA having tribal consultations. So it's a good thing and we're staying on it and we will stay on it for you. All right, um, repatriation, uh, as you know, our Pawnee Nation delegation tribal to Sweden for, um, for our relative white fox. The Pawnee Nation delegation was Madam President Nuttall, Nagba Coordinator Marty Onlya Chief and Tribal Historic Preservation Officer and Asharo Council Member Matt Reed. The delegation plans to visit with the Asharo Council and then with the Cultural Committee before they final, before they give a final update to the Pawnee Business Council on next steps. And then I wanted to go over, we had so many great community events, um, last quarter and so, um, I wanted to list just a couple of them. Pawnee Nation Violence Against Women hosted a Tadahah picnic, I said Tadahah, it's, um, it's Tiharasa picnic. Pawnee language classes were every Wednesday at 6:00 PM at the Pawnee Nation Museum. The Cultural Resource Division hosted three fundraiser events in October to raise funds for the 2024 Rickrow Reunion. Uh, the Pawnee Nation Princess Committee had a dance to introduce the 2024 Pawnee Nation Princess Cory Marie Pratt, uh, Cora Marine Pratt, I'm sorry. Pawnee County Mental Health Coalition meetings, um, they had, uh, three meetings and they were, um, to discuss child abuse and reporting, find peace within and mindfulness event. Pawnee County Mental Health Coalition also partnered with the Buffalo Theater to hold free movie nights throughout the quarter. Pawnee Nation Violence Against Women hosted a child abuse and sexual assault awareness walk. The Pawnee Nation Wellness Programs held weekly classes on cardio, strength training, yoga and Tai Chi. Tai Chi, I hear went really well, they're thinking of bringing other things back. The Food Distribution Program is providing no-cost meals, um, that just ended actually, for kids ages one to 18 from, um, it was from June 3rd to August 5th. They extended it to Monday and, uh, the pickup was from nine to three. They, they, it did so well that we had to ask for more boxes and every single one of them was picked up and so we're excited about that for next year. Taro has firewood for sale, so please contact Taro if you have any detail, for details. Pawnee Nation Agricultural Division hosted several Pawnee, um, plant walks to learn and identify Pawnee indigenous plants, how to home garden native plants, as well as held a community event and dinner open to tribal agricultural producers, tribal community leaders and community members to gather local opinions on OSU cooperative extensions. Um, tribal extensions and tribal agricultural, agriculture in the Nation community, in the tribal Nation community. There was a fraud awareness event, it was held at Rome Chief Event Center and that was hosted by First Bank and Trust. Title VI elders partnered with the Travelers Club to honor Charles Lone Chief as one of the 2024 TU Athletics Golden Hurricane Hall of Fame inductees. During the Pawnee Steam and Gas engines show, the Pawnee Nation Campgrounds opened the RV park to renters and if you have any questions about that, um, please contact a property. The Pawnee Nation Cultural Resource Division and Office of Historic Preservation held a presentation on the archeology of Massacre Canyon. Pawnee Nation Violence Against Women held a missing and murdered indigenous women luncheon to honor native women and bring awareness. The Pawnee Nation Division of Natural Resources and Safety held a car seat checkup event in conjunction with the Children's Hospital at St. Francis and in the Oklahoma Highway Safety Office. Native Connections hosted a series of classes, um, for seventh to 12th grade indigenous learners and these classes were everything from making dance regalia to moccasins to drumsticks and shaws. Pawnee Nation Substance Abuse Program hosted a horseshoe tournament. The Pawnee Nation Diabetes Program partnered with the Pawnee Indian Health Service to host a free diabetes screening fair. They provided quick screenings for foot, dental hearing, vaccine checks, height, weight, nutrition, and they do these often. Pawnee Nation Native Connections held boxing classes with Dennis the Pawnee Express Snipe Chief that were open to all native youth ages 10 to 17 who reside in the Pawnee service area. Pawnee Nation will host, and then this was just two disclaimers, uh, I wanted to make sure everybody knew about. Pawnee Nation will host our Rickrow relatives for the annual reunion on Friday, October 10th through Sunday, October 13th. CRD is doing a lot of fundraisers for this and they have a lot of really great things planned for that. And then on that, um, right after the next day, on the 14th, on Monday, will be the 150th anniversary of our Pawnee Reservation. And, um, CRD as well as the community, um, the Cultural Committee is planning, um, to invite tribal members to walk across the bridge at Ralston, Oklahoma to our reservation here in Pawnee. So if you have any questions, please reach out to Herb Adson. Do you have any questions?
Questions for the Executive Director. I don't believe so, thank you for your report. Item number 13, Pawnee Nation Attorney General Report. Mr. Vance, the floor is yours.
Thank you, Madam President, and good evening, business council members. I, um, I think I'm going to have to give this report a little bit differently than I would expect to in the future. As you all are aware, AG Smith and I completed our transition period during July and so AG Smith prepared or purportedly prepared the second quarter report. So I'll, I'm happy to answer any questions on anything on his report, but my report, I think it would be most helpful, I was going to run through the things that I've been working on during this transition time in addition to just that general transition and then if there are any questions, I'd be happy to answer those. But, um, going forward at future quarterly meetings, obviously I'll be here for the entire period, so I'll prepare the report and all of that, um, going forward. But as far as, uh, what I worked on since the transition time was, uh, in June, we'd completed the, or began the transition with Attorney General Smith. I came up to the Nation for a staff meeting at the invitation of, uh, the Executive Director and it was a very wonderful time, I enjoyed meeting all the staff and, uh, meeting with several members of the executive team, um, and just seeing how competent and invested everyone is and seeing the Nation continue to thrive. I also, uh, spoke with the Executive Director a bit about the tribal civics materials that she's been working on, focusing on, you know, getting the directors and everyone engaged with the, um, tribe's laws and proper management and understanding sort of their rights and how they relate to the Nation and all of that. And then, uh, in addition to all of that, in the background, I, you know, over the last few months, I've been doing resolution review as those pop-up MOU review, contract review as, uh, different directors or whomever has reached out for those types of things. Uh, June was also when we did, uh, looked into the force fee patent issue and, um, had some communications in relation to that. Then, uh, we also had from AG Smith, it's sort of the leftover of the codification of the Nation's laws into 25 titles. Um, that was really a project AG Smith was leading that I believe he wrapped up in July. And as it relates to litigation in July, I did my entry of appearance in the Northern District of Oklahoma on behalf of the Nation in the matter of the Pawnee Nation of Oklahoma versus BIA, which is pending, uh, related to damage created with, uh, oil exploration that we're working with Earth Justice and, uh, Michael Friedman on. And in addition, in conjunction with that, we recently had a, had our first meeting with, uh, Michael Friedman and got more of a substantive view of how that litigation's ongoing and next steps for the Nation. And then we've also been looking at, uh, some compact issues as, um, every tribe is looking at specifically, you know, issues related to the tobacco compacts that are coming up at the end of this year and how, you know, nations are going to approach those issues. Other than that, I've attended several of the executive meetings, or the, um, these business council meetings over my time there and that is largely in a review of what, uh, has occurred during the transition period. Happy to answer any questions.
Thank you, Attorney General Vance, for, um, the updates that you provided. And the Attorney General Report submitted by, um, former AG Smith is in the packet and it just kind of expands on what Jen had mentioned too about the EPA, um, the meetings with the EPA on the safety issue and then some of the projects that Attorney General was closing out before the transition to Attorney General Vance. Does anyone have any questions on, on either report?
Uh, Mr. Vance, this is Sammy Kimball. I actually chair the IT and Communications Committee. I, uh, worked sporadically, if you will, on the codification, uh, project that Mr. Smith was working on and I would like to take some time out, uh, with you and Jennifer and, um, President Nuttall and get an understanding of where we're at with that and have that discussion prior to that, uh, being loaded, well, actually vetted, uh, by governing docs brought here to council and then loaded by, um, uh, JD Young, who was contracted to upload and implement that for us. So just a heads up that that'll be coming at you and we'll take it offline from here. Thank you very much.
Yes, ma'am, I look forward to it.
Thank you, Councilwoman Kimball. And just a question, we have an item on the agenda that was under Old Business for the Community Power Accelerator MOU. Have, has that been presented to you for review?
The Community Center.
Community Power Accelerator MOU.
Yes, that was, that was presented to me.
Okay.
Uh, that, I actually, we, AG Smith and I both reviewed that, uh, previously, actually.
Okay, did we have any issues with that? It's on the, it's on the, uh, it's the next item on the agenda, but I didn't want you to jump off in case we had any questions for that.
Oh, totally understandable. There were, uh, a few minor corrections, but I'm, they were corrected, so there, there are no issues.
Okay. Thank you for that. Any other questions on the Attorney General Report? Hearing none, Attorney General Vance, thank you for your report. We're moving on to item number 14 under Old Business, item one, discussion and/or action on Community Power Accelerator Memorandum of Understanding with Tribu Quin Corporation.
Yeah, so you have, uh, both Alex and I on, on the, uh,
Yeah, so you have both Alex and I on the, online here to answer any questions, counsel.
Questions. Did we secure funding for this? Can you kind of refresh our memory here? Is this, is this, is the funding already secured for this project or?
I can jump in here, Chris. So the funding has not been secured. We are in a transition period with the DOE where we have to kind of present documentation of that partnership that is happening. That's why the MOU is taking place at this point in time. We would look to secure funding January, February of next year, and that's when we have to go to Washington DC and pitch this project to Wall Street investors and DOE and the federal government that will also look to kind of take this project to other people that are interested. We've identified several sorts of funding, one through the IRA funding, which are tax credits. The other one would come through a bridge loan, which we have already had conversations with sovereign banks. The other portion would come through grant funding such as EPA or Solar For All Funds. And last but not least would come Wall Street investors, which we're looking to secure through this pitch going up to the DOE. So the main objective of the MOU is just to show the DOE that there is a partnership between Tribuquint and the Pawnee Nation. And in that MOU, it's really to go forward and accept and flush out that cooperative agreement and the tribal LLC that would represent Pawnee Nation through this project.
Okay, has this gone through the planning committee?
Yes.
Counsel, does anyone have any questions on this MOU?
I have a question.
Yes.
Are we locked into the names that are mentioned here? You know, because it says Tribal Utility LLC, you know, is that an official name? You know, what part of that is, you know, our utility act, it's called the Utility Authority, which is a law. I don't know if we need to change that in the MOU to reflect that, and then at a later date, you know, it could be changed. That's my only concern, because like I said, this Tribal Utility LLC is not an actual LLC of the nation, just Jed, correct? So it just, it just kind of concerns me that we're using a name that's not an official name of the tribe.
Or entity.
Or entity of the tribe, correct?
Yeah. What we're just identifying is that we are going to form, under tribal law, that Tribal Utility LLC. The name is up for you guys to come up with. We are just saying that we're going to create one. But this by no means has to be a generic like it's identified in the MOU. Once it's formed, you guys will put the name that you guys deem is good.
And what is the deadline for this funding or this funding opportunity that you're seeking?
So this month is our deadline. Before the end of this month, we need to upload the MOU and the sightland agreement. And then those two documents are going to allow us to see the next round.
President.
Okay, because there is an issue, I don't know if you caught the last of her question, but Tribal Utility LLC is a LLC, I mean, it hasn't even been created yet. Also Featherlight Cooperative, what is that entity?
These two entities will be created. What we just have to demonstrate is that there's a partnership and the will to create these entities. It's not set in stone, none of them. It's just proving that there is an agreement and that those are the next steps within the partnership.
Okay.
Can I ask a question on who Featherlight Cooperative would be? Who, who the?
Yeah. So this is a cooperative agreement, and this is going to be owned by tribes. The first two tribes that we have that we're working with is one in Minnesota, Lower Sioux, and the Pawnee Nation. So the solar project, sorry, is going to be owned by the Pawnee Nation and be represented through your tribal LLC.
Donna, did you have questions?
We have until the end of the month, right? I think we need to, I think we need to table this.
Okay.
I think we really need to try to get a grip onto what we want to be called and make sure that we're good with that. I mean, if you guys are in agreement.
Yeah, let's get all the questions out, and then when we have that meeting, they can present that as well. Councilwoman here.
Yes, the land, this went through the Land Use and Property Committee. And since there was some discussion about the name in the last council meeting, the committee made the motion to move this forward to the council with the caveat that the name can be changed if needed.
I'm in agreement with that. I just, I think I'm the one who mentioned it in the last meeting as well. And then to see it back in there as the same, because, you know, it's just concerning when we have a governing document already in place that says that it is Utility Authority, why wouldn't we just use that? And like I said, we can always change the name of anything, you know, we just have to go through the processes. And if there's already a name established, just use the name we already have established and move forward with it. So if, and that would be my only recommendation for this.
Okay, we do have a recommendation on the floor to table. I don't know if that's, if you want to make a motion or?
It's up to this county, it's to this body. It's all, you know, that'd be my recommendation unless you all are good with it.
What's everyone's thoughts?
Does it require a motion?
If you want a table, yes. Entertain a motion to table. Community Power Accelerator MOU.
I make a motion to table until we get the issue of the name clarified.
Got a motion on the floor. Is there a second?
Is there a question down there?
We're looking for a second. Oh, Chris, I see your hand raised.
Yes, thank you. I would ask, you know, since we do have the AG on, his opinion, and if this does move forward, allow us to work with him and work out any other questions that the council would have.
I think that's what Councilwoman Kimball is wanting to do, is to have a further discussion. And then any questions presented, you know, whether it requires the opinion of the Attorney General or just, you know, programmatic questions, that's what's needed for clarification here. Whether it's, you know, just changing it, as Councilwoman Butler had to, had to mention, you know, there already is a name within our tribal laws. And so it's, you know, that can be inserted. However, you know, the issue is still there's a Featherlight Cooperative that's going to be developed, but we're not for sure what that even entails. I think it just takes a little bit, a little bit more communication to familiarize everybody with what's going on before we push this MOU forward. So we have a motion on the floor, but do we have a second? Yes. If no second, then the motion dies.
I'll second.
Okay, I got a second on the motion to table.
And I just want to be clear, the reason why we're tabling is, is because this is just a big question, and I hate to commit and then have to go back. And as the president has stated, you know, we sure hate to, to be in a hurry to come to some type of a consensus. Oftentimes, and I'm sure everybody here will agree, that we get documents brought to council without the opportunity to vet. And we need to be able to read and understand.
Alex, I see your hand raised.
Yeah, thank you, President Nell. I just wanted to clarify that this MOU is establishing that both parties are going to work together for the development and formation of that Tribal Utility LLC. It has not been created yet, hence it doesn't have a name. And the MOU just has a generic name because that is what's going to be developed, and that's what the MOU is trying to explain. So that's what I just wanted to kind of make emphasis on. Thank you.
I just want to make one more comment, because in the document, it has, it refers to Party One, Party Two. Even if we just take out the name and refer to everything as Party One, Party Two, you know, I could be okay with it. But I would like to have a little bit more information and discussion, because you guys are just throwing this at us. And I think that I mentioned that at the meeting last time. Get us in a scoping meeting, get us some more information on this, and I'm glad that you, I apologize, I didn't read the stuff that was before it. But I just feel like we're just approving things like this always in a rush and in a hurry without even getting the proper documentation and information presented to us. So we're, you know, I would like a little bit more, like, sit down to say, hey, this is what this is, this is what our benefits are, this is what's going to be developed, this is what the, so we can be confident when we come to this, our level to do these things.
Do you still have a comment? Secretary Garda P.
Alex, I just had a question. Was this, was this part of that $1 million prize that we, that you talked about a while back? Or is this, is there a funding agency, a grant or something? I'm just trying to wrap my head around what this MOU is for.
Yeah, I believe there was a couple of presentations before Secretary Garda P. And I'm sorry if there was not enough communication and presentations from our side. I think that we've been discussing this for the last month through the different groups, but this is an opportunity that should have been won through the Department of Energy, where we would bring at no cost five megawatt installations for the Pawnee Nation. We passed the first phase, and the second phase requirement is that we prove that there is a partnership with the Pawnee Nation and that the Pawnee Nation is receptive and positive of going forward and building that five megawatts. Like I said, it has no cost to the nation. The funding sources, like I said, would come through federal funding and private investor and having a local CDFI like sovereign banks. That's where we're at right now. And like I said, this document is just a generic document that will just establish kind of the partnership, and going forward, we would develop the names, the roles and responsibilities of Featherlight Cooperative, and have that kind of like partnership of flushing out what we need. But I do agree with Cynthia, and I apologize if there's not been enough information from our side. We're more than happy to jump on working groups and have as many sessions to bring everybody on board and speak as transparent and upfront as possible.
Thank you. Can you coordinate that meeting with Chris? And then, Chris, can you also get the NOFA or the funding announcement and have that available as well?
Yes, I will get that all scheduled and information to council.
Donna?
This came to property, right? And we, it came through property, and we're good with the project in itself, right? It's just, it's just that LLC. So as, as, I don't know, I would, can't we just keep it as the Pawnee Nation? Can't we just keep it, you know, you call yourself whatever you want, Featherlight or whatever, but just keep it as the Pawnee Nation, including its associated governance and operational documents? We can go.
Alex, can you answer why, or is there a distinction why there has to be two separate entities?
The Featherlight Cooperative is a governing institution, which includes the two tribes that are part of this project. The Tribal Utility LLC is the individual entity, legal entity that would be from the Pawnee Nation. But we have no problem in substituting the name of your preference into the MOU. And I would kind of rely on Attorney General and his thoughts about the validity or the wording of how it is right now and the implications when we develop formally that LLC.
Attorney General Vance, what's your recommendation? Because I see now why it's a cooperative, because it's between the nation and you had mentioned the lower rule, right?
Yes, it's a cooperative between Tribuquint, and then there would be two tribes starting that cooperative. It would be the Lower Sioux Indian Community of Minnesota and the Pawnee Nation of Oklahoma.
So there would have to be another entity or some kind of cooperative agreement?
Couldn't it say Pawnee Nation and Lower Brule? Couldn't it just have those like that?
I, my two cents would, and I don't, I'm sorry if I'm cutting anyone off, but my two cents would be, I do think everyone should be comfortable with the proposal beforehand. And so I'd be happy to get on a call with whomever we need to, to get it talked through. I do think if it was urgent, needed to be, if it needs to be passed, I do think naming, naming issues are some of the easiest to fix retroactively if it needed to be passed right now. But I don't think there's any problem with us all getting together and having that talk session and making sure everyone's comfortable.
That and having the NOFA will assist in seeing what actually is required and how we can meet that requirement with the cooperative agreement that's required between the, both the tribes. And then, you know, we pretty much have addressed the Tribal Utility LLC, because that can either just remain Pawnee Nation or the Utility Commission, as is already mentioned in our govern, or in our current governing document for our Utility Authority.
Right.
So if we can do that, that probably would be best. That way, we have the actual requirements in front of us, and we can actually see what needs to be done to make that happen. Because we're wanting to create this MOU, have this cooperative established, but, you know, we haven't even had any kind of discussions with the lower rule or, you know, have some kind of letter of intent or something like that before we even say we're going to have a cooperative. Otherwise, you know, if they don't have interest or they don't commit to the project, we're going to have to end up looking for someone else, because it's designated as a cooperative agreement. So I think that's the best way to proceed if we can get that meeting set up for everybody. Alex, I see your hand raised.
Thank you, President Nell. Yes, I'm happy to share that FOA, and it's more than an FOA, are the rules of the competition. Happy to share that with you. I'm happy to share with you also the MOU that Lower Sioux signed already as a reference for you, if you'd like to see that. And yeah, I could coordinate with Chris. We have to set those meetings in the upcoming days. Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you for that.
Call for the vote.
Okay, counsel, I have a motion on the table and a second. So is there any further discussion? If not, we'll call for the vote, and this is to table the MOU.
George Garda P., yes. Carol Chapman?
Yes.
Cynthia Butler?
Yes.
Donna Hare?
Aho.
Dean Evans?
Yes.
Sammy Kimball?
Yes.
Okay, that takes us to item number 14-2, Approval of Resolution 2408, Supreme Court Justice Selection.
I'll make the motion to approve a resolution 2408.
We've got a motion on the floor to approve the resolution 2408. Is there a second?
I'll second.
Second by Treasurer Chapman. Are there any violations, additions?
Can we just read the name on who we're approving? It's Robert Gifford for the position of Supreme Court Justice.
Thank you.
And so this resolution, the court requires the judge to be appointed by the president of the Pawnee Business Council. Interviews were held, and the council had voted, come to a consensus and a selection on Robert Gifford. So that's the recommendation, and that's what I'm proposing to approve and move forward. And this will be for a, for the Supreme Court, so for a period of eight years, as per the Pawnee Nation Law and Order Code. And the term is set to expire August 8, 2032. So hearing, no other comments, we'll call for the vote.
George Garda P., yes. Carol Chapman?
Yes.
Cynthia Butler?
Yes.
Donna Hare?
Aho, yes.
Dean Evans?
Yes.
Sammy Kimball?
Yes.
Okay, item number three under Old Business. We have approval of 2024 Pawnee Nation's Second Quarter Report Divisions. And these were received in the Teams folder, and then those that requested hard copies, those were presented. those were presented as well.
President, I have a comment. The only comment, and I'm sorry, I don't have it in front of me, the only comment I had was on page 42, I think, and it was the finance, finance report. On the report, they do mention that there were more for the quarter, I think is what it said, that there were more expenditures than revenue. And so it was just a little concerning because it was reported, so I just want to, you know, make sure that we're watching that. Tribal expenditures during the quarter were this amount, and I think it was 1,800, with revenues of 700. It says revenues exceeded expenditures. Okay, okay, that's what it was. In the second quarter, the difference was partially made by indirect cost recovery. Okay. Okay, I see it now. And then they did have a concern about the, what was it, the revenue replacement, that there's no, there's zero dollars there, that there's no more money. Were we going to be, I thought, is that part of what the budgets were being taken out of previously? Is that what that was for? What we're supplementing budgets for? And then, so the rest of the money, do we need to put that into revenue replacement again? Because isn't that what we're using that for?
I have James on here.
I didn't know if Treasurer Chapman was going to, sorry, could answer that or not. That way.
Oh, I see where you're at. I'll let James answer that.
Well, that would be a council decision, though, but that's why I'm asking, are we, because I know we're going to have to use it for the next year's budget, and I know that's what you guys spent a lot of time doing these past couple of weeks. So is that where we're putting it, or is that where? It was just a question because it was mentioned, and I just, it just kind of stuck out to me.
Well, I tell you what, okay, so we've had budget call, and we have just had the first one. The second one is coming here pretty quick, right? Whenever, right, but we are to have that, and anything, we will be going over these. And currently, whatever there is in our ARPA, we are going to be dealing with all of those issues pertaining to all of our budgets that are, that might have something like that in it. So yes.
So we're moving it into revenue replacement so we can utilize it?
And we're waiting on, as soon as they get through with the audit, we can do our next step because we've gone through the first step, and this.
Because we have to have that funding spent by the, and that's, that was the only point I was trying to make, because we have to spend it by the end of this year. We're going to use it strictly for budgets.
Of course.
Yeah, allocating, allocating it, okay.
Right.
Just making sure. It was just something that stuck out to me, and I was just all like.
Oh, I understand. Yeah, we're, I know they've been real busy with the audit, but we are getting ready to have the second run, and that did, this all happened after the quarterly reports were done.
Thank you. Thank you for that. And I don't have any questions on any others. I do want to thank those programs who didn't get their reports in, who got their reports in. I read them, and thank you guys for that, because we do read these. I read these, I take the time to read these, and there's a lot of them. So I do thank the programs for having the reports ready.
Any other, any other questions?
I would just have a recommendation, is that we get these a little earlier than what we have been getting them, because they're really, really lengthy, and I don't like to have them run off because it's a lot of paper, but it's, it would have been better to have it a lot earlier than we did get it.
If we can move the, especially, yes, and especially since the quarter has, you know, ended in June. So if we can move our deadline up a little bit, so we can have more time.
We'll do that.
Yes.
Great idea.
Anyone else have any comments? If not, entertain a motion to approve.
I'll make a motion to approve the quarterly reports for the second quarter for divisions.
Motion on the floor, is there a second?
I'll second.
Second by Treasurer Chapman. No further discussion, we'll call for the vote.
George Garda P., yes. Carol Chapman?
Yes.
Cynthia Butler?
Yes.
Donna Hare?
Uh-huh.
Dean Evans?
Yes.
Sammy Kimble?
Yes.
Item number 14-4, approval of 2024 Pawnee Nation's second quarter report financials.
I'll go ahead, President.
Yes, Treasurer Chapman.
Yes, these were resubmitted. There were some missing sections in there, but this is okay. The date, the actual dates are, like you said, this goes through 6/30/24, the reports we have. And we, like I said, we've already had budget call, so we're still working on, just waiting for the audit to get done, to finish this up, because like, as reported, we want to be on time. We're, we're hoping to get this all done by early October, hopefully September. So anyhow, and I want to thank the finance staff because they work so hard doing everything. They do a lot, and I know, you know, it's very complicated, and I really appreciate the long hours they put in to help us. And I appreciate the council members, too, who are really taking an active role in looking at the budgets this year, because this is the final, this is it, I mean, December's it. So we're going to just work real hard to, to make, to make it possible to keep us as large as we've grown in the last four years, because we are a different council, and I mean, not a different council, but a different government now, I think. Four years, we've just taken a lot of giant steps, and I think that's positive and hope that we can continue it. Thank you.
Thank you for that.
So they're, yes.
I just had one question, and I know we haven't got an update on this in a while, but the Nisharo council, you know, we gave them some money for the, for the Med Lodge. Are they going to be, if they don't do it this year, are they carrying it over? Are we allowing that? Okay. It was just a question, because I saw all that money still in there. I don't want them to spend it and then expect us to give them more. I'll second your motion.
I'll make a motion.
I'll second.
Put a motion on the floor by Treasurer Chapman, second by Councilwoman Butler. If no further discussion, we'll call for the vote.
George Garda P., yes. Carol Chapman?
Yes.
Cynthia Butler?
Yes.
Donna Hare?
Uh-huh.
Dean Evans?
Yes.
Sammy Kimble?
Yes.
Thank you for that. James, you know, you did hear Treasurer Chapman's comments. If you could just please relay that to your staff, because we definitely are appreciative, and then, you know, all the reports that have been submitted. I know that takes a lot of time and effort.
Thank you, and I will, I will.
Thank you for that. Item number 15, new business. Item number one, approval of resolution 2441, Supreme Court Justice Selection. We had two vacancies, and this is the second. Recommendation is Joseph Halloran, and similar to the resolution 2408 that was just passed. This is again for a period of eight years, per the Pawnee Nation Law and Order Code, term set to expire August 8, 2032. Can I get a motion to approve?
I'll make a motion to approve.
Got a motion on the floor, is there a second?
I'll second.
Second by Treasurer Chapman. If no further discussion, we'll call for the vote.
George Garda P., yes. Carol Chapman?
Yes.
Cynthia Butler?
Yes.
Donna Hare?
Uh-huh.
Dean Evans?
Yes.
Sammy Kimble?
Yes.
Thank you for that. Item number two, approval of resolution 2442, Community Power Accelerator Project Land Allocation. With the pleasure of the council.
I would like to make a motion to table. This goes with the other, but there's also some grammar that needs to be fixed in the fourth whereas, yeah, in the fourth whereas. So I make a motion to table.
We have a motion on the floor to table, is there a second?
I'll second.
Got a motion on the floor, second by Secretary Garda P. Any further discussion? Is that the only edit? Is the where, the fourth whereas?
The fourth whereas, yeah, and then maybe even, I'll make the edits, and I'll send them to you. Just make it easy on you.
Okay. So we got a motion on the floor to table. Let's, if there's no further discussion, we'll call for the vote.
George Garda P., yes. Carol Chapman?
Yes.
Cynthia Butler?
Yes.
Donna Hare?
Uh-huh.
Dean Evans?
Yes.
Sammy Kimble?
Yes.
Item number three, approval of resolution 2443, Tribal Transportation Program Bridge Funding Application.
Good evening, Rhonda.
Good evening, counsel. I don't know how much of an update you guys want. There's also MOUs attached with this, with all the counties that we prospectively will be partnering with to redo the bridges in the area. Right now, we have identified 39 that we'd like to go after, and this is just our first round of looking after the communication with the counties. If you will notice, Creek County is on there, which we typically don't service, but it's kind of no one's servicing area. So they asked us if we would help them out, and we would like to do that, if you guys agree with that. Do you have any questions?
Have you spoke with the Creeks, or have you addressed jurisdiction issues on that?
The jurisdiction with the transportation roads inventory filled is that no one has ownership. No other tribal jurisdiction has ownership of those roads. But I have not directly spoken with the Creeks on that area.
Okay, but are there Pawnees that live in the area, or why, why did we pursue that area?
Chris was in transportation at that time, and I think they got with him first, and his hands up, so maybe he can explain that part better?
Yes, so the transportation director for the Muskogee Creek actually contacted me on this, that it was not on their inventory, and then spoke with the county commissioner with Creek County. So where this bridge is, it's right on the border of both Pawnee and Creek County, so there's not a, like Rhonda said, there's not a
Jurisdiction.
Actual ownership, yeah, on jurisdiction. But they did, they contacted us to see if we would go after it, the funding.
Do you have a MOU with them in place?
That is actually.
I think that that would only strengthen your application as well. If, you know, because if, looking at it from a reviewer's perspective, if you're putting in for an application in a county that's not in your jurisdiction, you know, that would be my main question, is why are they going after this county? And then you're saying, you know, that it's within Creek County, which is, you know, their jurisdiction if we have some kind of MOU.
Correct, and that's a good statement. Basically, one of the main, one of the only obligations to get awarded this funding is that it's on our inventory, and the BIA has allowed it to move forward on our inventory.
Any other questions for Rhonda or Chris? Any questions?
Can we put a toe on that, Rhonda? Wait for.
We're claiming ownership.
Oh, it's not exactly ownership, but you do have to assign an ownership, because the BIA's database is a little aged. So when you put it in on the National Roads Inventory Database, it has an ownership assigned to it. So basically, what it does is we have an MOU that will state they own the road, but we're going to improve it, and they will maintain it.
Thank you.
And Rhonda, what is the financial benefit for the nation to take these on?
Well, the benefit on, for our community is actually to help people travel on safe roads, help buses, be able to pick up the kids and drive safely, help emergency response, get to where they need to be. Our bridges are really dilapidated, and they haven't been improved in over 50 years. So the tribal bridge funding has billions of dollars that they need to expend by 2019, and they are, on October 1st, it will be awarded billions more. So it's just money that's sitting out there that we can obligate to improve our communities.
So there's no financial gain for the nation to do all this work?
There is no financial gain to the nation. Besides, it will go through, it can pay some salaries, you know, help pay salaries while this is administered.
I get the, I get the intrinsics of it, but there's, we don't make any money doing this kind of work.
Just pay salaries.
Publicity. I feel like, I feel like we should put it out there that we're doing this.
I was going to say.
It's infrastructure.
I suggested that on each bridge we do, it needs to have a sign on it that says this is a service of.
Correct. Yes.
Provided by Pawnee Nation.
I agree, right.
Yeah, that is something that will be done during construction phase. This is the pre-construction phase. So after we, if we go for this, if you guys agree, we go for the pre-construction money, and then after the bridge is actually engineered, then we'll go out for construction, and that'll be part of that phase.
Yes.
And we will be coming back with you guys to see exactly, maybe give you some ideas of what you would like put on there, or if you agree with what we've come up with to put on each bridge.
Very good. Thank you.
Any other questions?
I make, I make a motion to approve.
Got a motion on the floor to approve, is there a second?
I'll second.
Second by Dr. Evans. Let's call for the vote.
George Garda P., yes. Carol Chapman?
Yes.
Cynthia Butler?
Yes.
Donna Hare?
Uh-huh.
Dean Evans?
Yes.
Sammy Kimble?
Yes.
Item number four, discussion and our action on Environmental Regulatory Commission. Who's presenting on that?
No, I was just asked to, if you'd be available for any questions or anything.
If I can, this may help. I'm not sure why it was on the agenda, but I know that it is something that Monti and I talked about, the need for this commission, as it's one of our codes, that we must have it. So I wasn't sure if that's what the discussion, if that's what the discussion was.
Are there, are there people who have applied for it, or are we waiting for reappointments for it? Are terms up on the commission?
Monti, can you give some feedback in this area?
No, I don't have information with me on it there. Staggered term, there's three people, you know, three commissioners, and they're staggered, and I do not have information on the status of membership this time, not with me right now.
I have questions, so this is brand new?
No.
No.
It's a law. It's one of our laws. We have to have it.
I meant the commission.
I don't think there's any action required on it.
But I will say, I know that it was a request of Monti, that we did seat it with, with people that had experience in environmental law and guidance that could help be stewards of the lands.
So there was not a commission previously?
There was a commission, yes.
It was before?
Three members.
There should be a seated commission at the moment.
Do we still have it?
Yes.
Yes.
Yeah, there should be still three seated members. I know we did have, I think, maybe one applicant, which was Mr. Freeman?
Yes.
Was requesting to be on the commission, and I don't know where we were at with all of that, appointing anybody or recruiting anybody, so.
I don't.
Within the, so I don't remember what the, what their act says.
Yeah, so we will defer to the council.
Okay, I just requested, maybe we put this on the word group so we can have further discussion.
You.
Okay, thank you for that. Item number five, discussion and our action on Pawnee Nation Museum Board of Directors.
This was probably the same thing, and I know that we have, I think all of them have expired at this point. A few of them have, we're not told, well, they're getting ready to expire. And then, so we probably need to do recruiting, or?
Yes, they're not active at this point.
Yeah, well, they're not active, but they had travel in their finance, second quarter, I noticed.
Okay.
So I'm just saying, you know, I notice things. You say they're not active. So I'm just saying, you know, I noticed things. You say they're not active, but, you know, they had travel. So did they have, but I didn't notice if they had a quarterly report.
So I did email Ms. Miranda and some of the board members to see if they had a report to turn in. And one of the board members informed me that they didn't meet this quarter. And then last quarter, whenever I requested a report from her as well, she said that they haven't met either. So they haven't met for this year yet.
Okay, thank you. We can move that to the work group as well.
But I would like a report on what the travel was, because I did notice that in their budget that they spent money on travel. I think it was $1,300 that was spent in their budget for travel for the second quarter. So if they can get us something with that, because they're spending money, if they're not meeting, they're spending it.
And who, and who is approving it?
And who's, yeah, exactly. Just something to throw out there. Sorry, guys, I don't mean to be-
So, so they all expire in October?
They're-
Okay.
Of this year?
All right.
Okay.
I mean, I think when we were doing budget call, the issues with the board came forward from the directors. And so will we be just opening up those positions then for new?
Well, we still need to follow with what their governing, their bylaws say. They're still seated until they're replaced. I think all of our documents say that. But they need to change their bylaws, because some of them want to be reappointed, but it says that they can only seat for so many terms. So a lot of them have termed out, which they're all vital to that, that board. They all do a lot of great work, but some of them can't continue with their work because they termed out. So they need to do some revamping of their, their bylaws.
Will you be working with them to do that?
Yes, I'll be reaching out to them, the election commission, sorry, I got the election commission on mine. The governing documents, we've discussed this at a previous meeting, and we're gonna start working with them probably in next month, September. We decided we're gonna try to reach out to them and see if they want to come and help us work them through what they need, what they need to get changed.
I think when you're working on them, I would suggest that you bring in the Director of Cultural Resources to work with them, because apparently there's some real big communication gaps. And it became evident when the, the grant was applied for, and nobody knew. So that, to prevent anything from that, like that happening again, if you could be sure and address that, because it was a real, I mean, it came up in budget calls.
Okay, yeah, please. Yes, thank you.
So no action on that one. Item number six, approval of resolution 2444 Pawnee Nation College Land Allocation. Who will be presenting on that?
Thank you. Thank you for letting us to be here. There's a write-up, kind of trying to summarize the issue that we have at the moment. I mean, February 1, 2020, resolution that was made here at the PBC was allotting land for the use by the college. We can't find any description of the boundaries of this land. The best I have was a description of, a verbal description from the former president when I was asking what land I could take students out to work in and, and collect data, or do some labs and things of that sort. So I wrote that up as to what he described to me verbally. We then looked in our files to try to find as much as we could. We found the resolution, but there's no description, again, of where it starts and where it ends, and not even how much land it is, or even where it's technically located. So I'm trying to, there is a map that has a polygon somewhere west of Big D Road, where we have our garden at present, and a field north of the garden that, that we've been using. So it's really important that we get a resolution, because in pursuing our accreditation process, we need to be able to at least say we have so many acres that Pawnee Nation has allowed us to utilize for our classes and research and, and monitoring, or whatever we need to do. So I'm hoping that, I proposed the, I don't know if you guys can see the map there, the second, the last map with the yellow polygon would allow us to have multiple habitat types that would really help us in our education and research. An open area for grasslands, a forested area, and the creek, which are things that we have already started thinking about doing work in. So that is our, our request, is that we, we could agree on a boundary. There's a lot of, a lot of people remember different things, I guess. I'm not exactly sure. 10 acres was something that was mentioned there, that the former property director remembers, but he's not, there's no actual documentation anywhere. So I just want to make sure that the college has something that visual or verbally described as to what northeast-west boundaries are in this case.
Thank you. President, Nell, I think the best thing to do at this moment is to take this off to property. Can we do that?
Has it not been to property yet?
To the, I've not seen it in the property committee.
The committee itself has not addressed it. We, he, they have been looking for it, the college. And when the committee approved it back in 2020, we had maps that were generated, and when we went, yeah, and so when we went back to find the map that we approved, we could not locate it. So I have searched through all of my files, and I think where I, I don't know if the property manager's assistant has searched through all of those files to find that map on the map that we approved in that meeting.
Yeah, I talked with, with Pat Leading Fox. He doesn't have it. Chris, actually McCray, was investigated with, within the archives as well. So there is no, nobody can come up with a map that was originally discussed for this. But originally, we did go through the property committee, obviously.
Yeah, and it, and I'm reading the motion made by you, Donna, way back when.
Should have been January 14.
And it says the land designation to utilize the land.
Yeah, it's a land use.
It's to utilize, it's to use the land.
That's right, and that's, that's what we're asking for, the use. We're not, we don't want, we're not asking for the ownership, by the way, correct. We, we have never been able to find, we don't have it. We asked whoever we could, and there's no actual verbiage of the resolution.
Right.
Yeah, this is all, that's it.
And so you're proposing the other map that was the bigger area?
Yes.
Because I think, because I'm trying to recall from that, because I would have took the minutes for that.
That, that-
You guys, you guys were gonna do the things along the creek bed, along the little, the thing, so I think that that was included in that?
Correct.
So, yeah.
So this is everything on up to the post, basically?
Yeah, because they were gonna do like the bridge and stuff like that for them.
So are you, I mean, what's, what's the thoughts of the chairs of the Land and Property Committee? That's what they're proposing, is all of this land west of the Building 64, where their, where their garden currently is on up to the trading post along the creek beds up that, that way.
I, I think we need to check our maps to make sure that it's not overlapping on any other of the allocations. But I'm, I'm willing to work with them on trying to straighten this out and give you the land that you want to use.
Find the right edges.
Yes, yes.
Absolutely.
I'll make a motion to table.
We would appreciate that very much.
To table and recommend them to the property committee.
I'll second.
Got a motion on the floor by Councilwoman Butler to table and to have it go back through the property committee, and then seconded by Councilwoman Kimball. No further discussion. We'll call for the vote.
George Garter, P. Yes. Carol Chapman?
Yes.
Cynthia Butler?
Yes.
Donna here?
Uh huh.
Dean Evans?
Yes.
Sammy Kimball?
Yes.
Okay, that takes us to item number seven.
Dr. Ramirez, we'll invite you to that meeting. You'll be invited to that property meeting for discussion, I'm sure, right, Donna? We'll invite them to our property meeting, so you can talk, and we'll present, and we'll hammer it out. How's that? Thank you very much.
Item number seven, approval of resolution 2445, or I'm sorry, yeah, 2445 Liquor Control Commission Appointment. Okay, 2445, we had four, we had five openings for Liquor Control Commission, and we had four applicants. So we had held interviews to make sure that they were qualified and that they did meet the requirements. So it was recommended to appoint these individuals for appointment, and then following the appointment, they, in approval by council, they will move forward to the background check to be conducted to make sure that they're cleared and able to fulfill that position. So resolution 2445 Pawnee Business Council has hereby appointed Lyle Fields to serve on the Pawnee Nation of Oklahoma Liquor Control Commission effective August 8th. And then the term for this position will expire December 31st, 2027.
I'll make that motion.
Is there a motion to approve?
I'll second.
And seconded by Secretary Gardp. Any further discussions? If not, we'll call for the vote.
George Garter, P. Yes. Carol Chapman?
Yes.
Cynthia Butler?
Yes.
Donna here?
Uh huh.
Dean Evans?
Yes.
Sammy Kimball?
Yes.
Okay, item number eight, approval of resolution 2446 Liquor Control Commission Appointment. This one is for the appointment of Brian Kurt to serve on the Pawnee Nation of Oklahoma Liquor Control Commission effective August 8th, and term will expire December 31st, 2027.
I'll make a motion to approve.
Got a motion to approve. Is there a second?
I'll second.
Seconded by Secretary Gardp. No further discussions. We'll call for the vote.
George Garter, P. Yes. Carol Chapman?
Yes.
Cynthia Butler?
Yes.
Donna here?
Uh huh.
Dean Evans?
Yes.
Sammy Kimball?
Yes.
Item number nine, approval of resolution 2447 Liquor Control Commission Appointment. This resolution is to appoint Lindsay Cascanimi to serve on the Pawnee Nation of Oklahoma Liquor Control Commission effective August 8th, and whose term of office will expire December 31st, 2027. Is there a motion to approve?
I'll make a motion.
Got a motion on the floor. Is there a second?
I'll second.
Seconded by Secretary Gardp. It's called for the vote.
George Garter, P. Yes. Carol Chapman?
Yes.
Cynthia Butler?
Yes.
Donna here?
Uh huh.
Dean Evans?
Yes.
Sammy Kimball?
Yes.
Okay, item number 10, the last appointment. Resolution 2448, the Pawnee Business Council does hereby appoint Ben Leading Fox to serve on the Pawnee Nation of Oklahoma Liquor Control Commission effective August 8th, 2024, term of office to expire December 31st, 2027.
I'll make a motion to approve.
I second.
Got a motion on the floor to approve, seconded by Councilwoman here. No further discussion. We'll call for the vote.
George Garter, P. Yes. Carol Chapman?
Yes.
Cynthia Butler?
Yes.
Donna here?
Uh huh.
Dean Evans?
Yes.
Sammy Kimball?
Yes.
Item number 11, approval of resolution 2449. This is the Gaming Commission Appointment. The same process. Interviews were held, and we had two positions that were open for the Gaming Commission. And the council met, did a consensus, and we're recommending approval of two positions. The first resolution Pawnee Business Council met and elected to appoint Lyle Fields to serve as a commissioner of the Pawnee Nation Gaming Commission effective August 8th, and will expire August 8th, 2027. I get a motion to approve?
I'll make a motion.
Got a motion. Is there a second?
I'll second.
Seconded by Councilwoman here. No further discussion. We'll call for the vote.
George Garter, P. Yes. Carol Chapman?
Yes.
Cynthia Butler?
Yes.
Donna here?
Uh huh.
Dean Evans?
Yes.
Sammy Kimball?
Approval of resolution 2450, and I don't have 2450 in my packet. Pawnee Business Council met and elected to appoint Suzanne Canuho to serve as a commissioner of the Pawnee Nation Gaming Commission effective August 8th, 2024, and will expire August 8th, 2027. Is there a motion on the floor to approve this resolution and appointment?
I'll make a motion to approve.
Got a motion on the floor. Is there a second?
Second.
Seconded by Councilman Evans. Let's call for the vote.
George Garter, P. Yes. Carol Chapman?
Yes.
Cynthia Butler?
Yes.
Donna here?
Uh huh.
Dean Evans?
Yes.
Sammy Kimball?
Okay, item number 13, Budget Committee Recommendations. Item A, approval of resolu, oh, I'm sorry, approval of 4204 Indian Child Welfare Budget, mod. number one. Treasurer Chapman, the floor is yours.
Yes, this was discussed by Budget Committee, and the paperwork here is filled out. The requister is Randy Marks, and it is the Indian Child Welfare 4204, and the funding source is the Bureau of Indian Affairs. And the purpose of this is to approve the ICW Budget Mod. 1 to, in order to expend all the balance of approved funding. And the grants and contracts, Laura May has written additional comments down here for clarification. Out of $342,524 ICW funding, there is $47,548.90 indirect cost funding and $5,361.37 to spend on indirect cost, IDC. Consider direct contract support funding spent. For now, $52,910.27 is your 2024 program 4204 budget amount. $5,361.37 needs to be put in the IDC line item. And there is through 123124 to spend these funds. And as the attached documents show, the amount of $52,910.27 on this one.
This, this is a new budget?
No, there, it's a budget mod. And it's moving the actual amount of indirect costs that's gonna, that's required before the end of the fiscal year, and then moving monies to direct services. And I think that came because we had, the position was vacant, so we didn't have indirect costs.
It's a multi-year.
It, it just didn't make sense, because it has approved for 2024, but then it was proposed for 2024, and that's the only item, or column that's... I get it. It's just, it wasn't filled out correctly. Well, like, like we normally see it, but that's fine.
Any more questions?
Is there any other questions?
If not, I'll make a motion.
Got a motion on the floor by Treasurer Chapman to approve?
I'll second.
Seconded by Councilwoman Butler. Let's call for the vote.
George Garter, P. Yes. Carol Chapman?
Yes.
Cynthia Butler?
Yes.
Donna here?
Uh huh.
Dean Evans?
Yes.
Sammy Kimball?
Yes.
Okay, that takes us to item number 13B, Approval of 2146 Community Service Block Grant, Budget Mod. number three.
Yes, this is Community Service Block Grant, CSBG, and the requister is Lisa Gooday. And it is, the funding source is the Department of Health and Human Services, and the amount of the request is $33. And it is to approve the CSBG Budget Mod. 3, Modification 3. And it is adding, the program justification as stated in the attachments is adding in the final 1% allocation to the current budget. And attached to the financials here, you can see that the $33-
James Black.
Is now joining.
Oh, hi, James.
Hello.
This is an allocation that was received from the funding agency, and they're just adding it to the budget. For any other questions? If not, entertain a motion to approve the Budget Mod. 3.
I'll make a bu, a motion.
I'll second.
Got a motion on the floor and seconded.
We haven't had a break, you guys.
And seconded by Councilwoman Butler. Let's call for the vote.
Georgia Garda P, yes. Carol Evans?
Yes.
Cynthia Butler?
Yes.
Donna Hare?
Uh huh.
Jean Evans?
Yes.
Sammy Kimball?
Yes.
Okay, item number C, Approval of 3415 Intertribal Buffalo Council Herd Development Budget.
Is Sunny or Jim, Jimmy Justuson?
I don't see either.
So this is a grant that we received from the Intertribal Buffalo Council. It was for $55,100 that Sunny wrote and was awarded. And now we have developed the budget to spend it. We're gonna build the fence. And that's what this is for. It's, it's going to be awesome. So I make a motion to move this forward.
I'll second.
Thank you.
Got a motion on the floor by Councilwoman Kimball, seconded by Dr. Evans. Does anybody have any questions? If not, let's call for the vote.
Georgia Garda P, yes. Carol Chapman?
Yes.
Cynthia Butler?
Yes.
Donna Hare?
Uh huh.
Jean Evans?
Yes.
Sammy Kimball?
Yes.
Okay, item D, Discussion and our Action on Resolution 2451 ARPA Allocation School Clothing Assistance.
Yes, I'll go ahead and present on this one. This came to us earlier, and we worked on it. And James Black is here. Welcome, James. I don't know if I've mentioned--
Thank you.
But thank you for coming and helping with this, and thank you for your justification sheet here. But we had already had, let's see, what, how much was it in here that we already had allocated? 13,000 funding available we had from last year. So we worked and worked on this to try to come up with enough funding to do jurisdictional and non-jurisdictional for a school, a card, gift card for clothes for our, our youth ages four years to 18 for school. So we were able to come up with the money. And James, would you like to say anything? Would you like to go ahead and... We did find the money comes out of--
VIA.
VIA.
Right, no, no, I mean, I think, you know, it's a needed, a needed thing, and it'll, it'll help the kids in the area with, with school and everything, and the parents. So, I mean, it's, it's a very, it's very generous for you to find the funding and everything for that, I'll say.
Okay, thank you, James. Thank you for your work on that. And welcome to the Pawnee Nation.
Thank you.
Glad you're here, very glad. So, are there questions? We are. This is VIA ARPA. That is the balance.
I have a question for you, Mr. Black. Do you have, do you have the application already developed for this? Or what is the plan of action? Should these funds be approved?
Yeah, so to, to that, we're gonna develop, I wanted to wait until after we see if it was gonna be approved or not. But what we'll do is we'll develop the application that goes out. We'll set a deadline that applications need to be backed by this time. And then we will issue the cards out, and we'll say this is the distribution date. They'll be mailed, or you can pick up on this date. And then that way, it's like a one-time thing, and it's not rolling for, you know, multiple months.
Okay, and then what about, is there any, any kind of requirement that's going to be put out there to show enrollment?
Yes, we're gonna require, like, on the application, so, yeah, that's what I'm trying to explain is that the application will go out, and it'll have those requirements on there.
Let me clarify, school enrollment?
Oh, yeah, they're gonna, yeah, they're gonna have to let us know what school they're in. Like, now, I don't know. It, it's gonna be hard to track that down without calling the schools. For, for the kids that are in our program, our JOM program, we'll have that information. But for tribal members that live outside of our jurisdictional area, we won't. We're, we're just gonna, unless we call every school and say, is this student enrolled?
We were just discussing, but in the past, too, there was a form that they took to the school that they just had their school official sign and then bring it back.
Okay.
And, and we could, we could include that in the application as well, so that, you know, just proof of enrollment.
Yeah, but, I mean, that's something that can be discussed, like we're saying, you know, should this, should these get approved? Just to let you know of some things that were issues with the program the last time. And then making sure that applicants can submit, you know, in as many ways as possible, whether it's bringing in an actual paper application, or emailing, or, you know, those, those kind of things. So it's not just limited.
Right, right.
What about the, well, what about the programs? Or what, you know, with your 477 program, how would it address 19-year-olds that are seniors? Just, what is, what, how does your program address those individuals?
So we could, depending on what in the plan is what, we have to follow the BIE and VIA-approved plan for 477. We can help those individuals that are in our service area. Like, we can, we can give them, now, I don't know that we can call it a clothing reimbursement, but what we could do is call it some kind of incentive or stipend. And if we do that, then we can do that for the ones in our area. Now, the ones outside of our area, we cannot, we cannot use 477 funds for that.
Okay, yeah, we, while we get that on the federal funding side, these would be tribal dollars, so we're just trying to talk our way through that. But I know even for tonight, we just have the information for up to the age of 18. But that was a question that was brought about, is addressing those that are over the age of 18 that are seniors in high school.
I mean, I guess the only way to make, ensure that those, those numbers got addressed is to add 18, or 19 to the total and see how many 19-year-olds enrolled Pawnee members there are to include those.
What, what's the pleasure of the council? Do we want to just include the 19-year-olds and leave the dollar amount as is? And then if we have to come back, you know, add more?
I'm ready to include it.
Because they had a remaining balance--
I think that's a great idea.
They had a remaining balance of 13,000.
It's pretty minimal.
And it's unlikely that everybody will apply anyways, so I think we're good.
Yeah.
Okay.
So.
So we'll make, we'll make an amendment to the resolution and add through the age of 19 years.
Okay.
I'll make a motion to approve with changes.
Okay, we got a motion on the floor to approve with changes?
I'll second.
And a seconded by Councilwoman Kimball. Any further discussion? And we, and I like that you do have the deadline on here. That way the, we can see, you know, how much funds are not expended.
Right.
If no further discussion, let's call for the vote.
Georgia Garda P, yes. Carol Chapman?
Yes.
Cynthia Butler?
Yes.
Donna Hare?
Uh huh.
Jean Evans?
Yes.
Sammy Kimball?
Yes.
Thank you for that, and also thank you to the enrollment department who helped in providing us these numbers.
Yes.
James, if we can get, you know, that process kind of outlined as soon as possible, because I know we're gonna have questions probably as soon as this meeting is over.
Right, yeah, we're, we're, we'll get to work on it tomorrow, and hopefully we'll have the application all rolled out by, I'm shooting for mid next week.
Okay, thank you very much. At this time, that brings us to item number 16, Open Forum. Do we have anything for Open Forum?
James Black.
Is now exiting.
Good evening, council.
Good evening.
It's good to be here. It's good to see you guys. Heard a lot of good stuff. I haven't been keeping up with what's been going on here at the nation. So it was very informative. I think I heard one good question, which each council member should be posing each time these proposals are submitted. And, and that's, how is it gonna benefit our, our people? And, you know, is there a revenue that's gonna be for our people? I, I think those are very important, I mean, to submit for things. And, and I know we all take that time to, to look at how it's gonna be sustained and how it's gonna be managed and, and things like that. But I, I think it should be really a priority for any submission, and that should be passed down to staff, you know, for, for those staff members who are submitting for these proposals and different things for funding. So, anyway, I heard that, and I thought that was really great. But what brought me out today was an answer I'm trying to get for the last two years, and that, are we gonna be ready for this Real ID for travel? Okay, so I've been making suggestions. I've been trying to talk to the executive director, I think, are you Brian Kirk? Okay, and I've talked to you, and, you know, I've, I've wanting to know, are we ready? Are we gonna be proactive, or are we gonna be reactive? And, and all of a sudden, 2025 pops up, and we're still sitting there going, well, it's gonna be another month. It's gonna be another six months, or it's gonna be this or that. After the fact, when the Real ID goes into place for travel, okay? So I'd, I'd like, and, and like I said, I've been asking this for two years. No answers, right? No answers. And so the closest I got was a money issue, right? A money issue that talks about millions of dollars that this is gonna take, right? I haven't seen that. I haven't seen those numbers being generated from any tribe saying that it's gonna cost millions to do that. So, I don't know. I looked at the TSA myself. I, I looked into it, I read it. It, it reads as if we are compliant with just our CDIB, right? But it, it's kind of like an interpretation-type thing, I think, depending on the airport. I'm, I'm not really sure. But that's where we need some answers, all right? So, and it's gonna take you guys. It's gonna take you guys, like I suggested before. And it's gonna take the Attorney General, our new Attorney General, to, to help in that process, to, to, along with our enrollment department, right? It, it's gonna take all three to sit down and really figure out a, a way so that when people need to travel, and we all need to travel, you guys need to travel, right? And, 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 you know, our tribal members need to travel out of Pawnee once in a while, right? So, so that's been my concern. And, you know, at some point, and, and it's coming up fast, right? We're already going late into 2024, 2025's coming up. I wanna be ready. I'd like to be ready once in a while, you know? And, and so, and you guys need to be ready. If, if you're going to these different conferences and, and having to attend on behalf of our people. So, I don't know, does anybody have any input on that? Because like I said, I've been reaching out for the last two years.
Just from what I sent, just from what I sent you, John, when you, when you asked me, I contacted Carrie Peters and asked for the information. The only tribe that Carrie knows that's doing Real ID right now is Shiner Apahos. It's very expensive. I was sharing with John this evening, I've shared this knowledge with him, that's all I know about. But I know that it would be a great idea that they would collaborate with the other nations. Since they're spending the money to do it, could they maybe start a little business to incorporate and build, build everybody else's cards, too? I mean, it doesn't make sense for every nation to spend $4 million, you know, when one nation can do it and maybe make revenue, you know, which would be awesome. But right now, the only thing that Carrie told me was what I shared with you was, is just the options to use your, your, which isn't, you know, the best solution to what you're here for tonight. By the way, welcome. I'm sorry you didn't bring me a Tommy's--
Right.
--or Roberto's or something really good. But it's, it's just one of those things, and, yeah, that's where we're at right now. Now, maybe there's gonna be a solution. Maybe you, somebody knows more than I do.
Yeah.
But what you got?
That's what I'm hoping that you're able to report. I know that Carrie has attended--
Right.
--enrollment training, and they were discussing the Real IDs.
Right.
And I thought Osages were compliant as well in utilizing their CDIBs for Real IDs.
I don't know that.
So this is what I have. I just got the phone with Carrie. I called her. And so she's going to training on this next week, along with some other tribes, with the Oto's, the Second Fox, and the Iowes. This is the problem we're having, is that we have to have an MOU with Homeland Security, and all of our equipment has to be approved by Homeland Security, meaning their caliber. Meaning the cards have to have that--
Hologram.
That hologram, it has to have that strip. It is a level of clearance, and that's very pricey. So the equipment, the cards, the scanning, the, the camera you buy, all, everything has to be Homeland Security-approved and, and in use. And so the tribes are having a meeting next week to talk about this and see, you know, has the price gone down at all? Because this is an issue for all tribal nations, is they just can't afford it.
So you have a price tag with that, then?
Yes, because the entire, all the equipment, everything--
Do you have a price tag?
Oh, no, I do not.
Okay, all right. We have a great IT guy over here that might be able to start a new business.
Right.
But anyway, so that's been on my mind. And is that conference local, or is it out of state? It's local? Okay, great. I'm glad to hear something's moving. Haven't heard too much movement for, you know, Real ID. So I'm, I'm still going to be asking questions, you know? Trying to get some timelines, because, you know, meetings, conferences is great, but we need to finish product.
I'm gonna add this. I know whenever we had the, I went to the tribal leaders' meeting in Washington DC two years ago, and the Transportation Director, Pete Buttigieg, was there, and we talked with him about this very issue. Biden has funding that he's put towards tribes for borders, and it included Homeland Security and enrollment cards, all of that. So this is something tribes have been talking about for a long time. They're trying to, Biden has given a lot of funding to border. In fact, they're trying to change the, the border restrictions to become intertribal, because, you know, we live within a, you know, we're a state within a state, that means we have borders. So we should be able to have a discount, if you will, for, for Homeland Security. And we should be able to have the same agreement that the US has or anybody else, because we are bordering to a different state. So, so the good news is that, is that, is that the Department of Transportation's working on that. Biden's administration has been fantastic about that. And so that's something that actually we can look into and see. Hopefully, in this meeting that Carrie goes to, there'll be an update on Department of Transportation for that.
Yeah, that's, that's interesting, because I know individually states have to provide Real IDs, just as a state, right? So, you know, I don't see where we cannot not provide that. So, anyway, okay, well, thank you. Thank you for that update.
It just shows how important it is to know your civics and to vote, because this matters. Whenever our legislators, our tribal legislators, sit at the state and federal table, they can talk about issues like this, and it matters, so, thank you.
Yeah, okay, and then, okay, so I'm looking at this agenda, and I see there's another ARPA allocation. So I, I see this periodically, right? And I'm wondering, is there a, an, into that? And I'm wondering, is there a, a end, end to that? Or does it, or do we have just endless ARPA monies that are just sitting in reserve?
We have a small amount left from the original allocation and we are now doing a budget call and finishing up the year for projecting what we are gonna need for next year because it all has to be allocated and spent.
Okay, so there is a deadline for, for?
Yes, it's December, it's the December.
It's December to be allocated. And then 2025, it has?
Has to be spent.
Be spent, okay, great.
Yes.
Great, okay, good, because, yeah, I kept seeing it pop up.
There's, there's BIA, BIA, the, some of the programs get BIA funding, which is separate ARPA.
Great, um, let me see. I think that covers all my questions. So, those are the things I wanted to bring out and, and get some answers. So, I appreciate your time, I appreciate you guys working on behalf of our nation. I know it's a difficult job, you know, it, it, it's tough sometimes, you know? And, you know, I'll, I'll keep you in my prayers and maybe we'll see you again when I return, when my son graduates in 2025, so.
Wonderful.
Right?
Wonderful.
All right, so thank you.
Thanks, John.
Thank you, thank you.
Safe travels to you too.
Thank you, John.
Okay, item number seventeen, set the next meeting date.
We have some online ones now. The first one is just a statement from Ms. Carla Knife Chief and she just mentions that every child needs to be funded. And I think that's in reference to the school clothing assistance. And then Mika Clark writes, what is the ongoing issue with the Communications Department? Why is the website outdated? How come we haven't had a tribal newsletter in years? How come only in, only certain individuals' accomplishments are highlighted? Who decides that? What can tribal citizens, where can tribal citizens submit inquiries or announcements? I've reached out at different times to Communications and the Executive Office but never received a response.
So, for the social media, the Executive Office does that and how we handle that is family members or anybody will reach out to us and that's how we post things. And we are hiring a communications manager, so we are aware of this and we are working on it.
It's, is there a, how do they submit to you? Just through Facebook or is there an email address for Communications or how do they?
No, so they can email myself, which is jlyttleson@pawneeNation.org or jnelson@pawneeNation.org and we will post things. And so, it's just, people will either email us or they will, they will message and say, hey, can you post this? And email internally.
And that's just in the interim though, right now?
Yes, yes, just for the interim, yes.
Just to clarify. Okay. Is that, is that the only comments? Oh, okay. I was ready to go on. Okay, item seventeen, set the next meeting date. Today is the eighth, so that would be the twenty-second, August the twenty-second?
Yeah, back to the twentieth.
Okay.
Thank you.
August the twentieth at 5:30 PM. Takes us to item number eighteen, adjournment. Okay, can I get a motion to adjourn?
I'll second.
Got a motion by Secretary Gardner, P.S., seconded by Councilwoman Butler. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, extensions? Hearing none, will adjourn at 8:43 PM. We're coming out tonight.